Chairman for the day, or this morning. If everyone would raise and join me with a pledge of allegiance, we'll get this meeting started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's two corrections I would like removed. Number one of the regular agenda and number 16. Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
With those adjustments, Mr. Chair, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board or the members about those items being removed? Hi, Tony.
I have a point of order to bring up right after your discussion.
Absolutely. Cherry?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Hi.
Hi, I have a point of order on the ad hoc regarding the Board of Action to create the Ad Hoc Committee for Planning and Zoning on the CO2 Pipeline Ordinance. Number one, the Planning Commission voted unanimously on February 24th to pass my ordinance and has never been rescinded to my knowledge. Number two, on April 17th, Planning Commission meeting, the Code of Ordinances Text Amendment, Chapter 154 zoning, after exiting executive session, the staff report, staff analysis nor legal analysis was given publicly as commented several times as March 20th Planning and Zoning meeting. I was treated as a proponent to my ordinance rather than an applicant as my team of professionals and I were never given the opportunity to present my ordinance under the rules, the chance to rebut the opposition testimony before action of the Board. Here's some notes, and then I do have some options for you if you'd like to discuss.
I think we'll get into our meeting today, but I hope you know I could not write all that down at once. Thanks, Tony. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience on any of that? Cherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
With number one being removed, we'll move on to the public hearing from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Toby here for this? Give us for a minute, we will need Toby. Morning, Toby, you're up. We're on item number two now.
Okay, good morning. Toby Brown, County Planning Director. Did you go through the parts of public hearing for this appeal?
No, I had, we were waiting for you to come before we got started.
Sorry, I'm a little winded. Yeah, so sorry, this is the time and place for a public hearing. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit, Use 0010-2023. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this permit at its March 20th meeting. The applicant for this item is Makota Holdings LLC. Location of this property is approximately six and a half miles northwest of the city of Beersford. Subject parcel is 20 acres in size, specifically be lot A and tract one of Van Beek's addition. Subject property is currently undeveloped or doesn't have anything on it. The purpose of this application is for a milk condensing plant. There is, within the conditional use permit criteria, there's three criteria within the Lincoln County Code of Ordinances for the approval of a conditional use permit. I'll briefly go through those summary. This was also in the staff report that was attached. The first is the impact the proposed use on adjacent properties shall be a major consideration. The proposed use should be generally compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. Again, this is all surrounding properties or zone A1 agricultural. The use is allowable by a conditional use permit in the A1 agricultural district. The proposal is for a milk condensing plant. The milk condensing plant essentially will remove the water from the milk, allow the water to be reused, and then allow the reduction of trucks leaving the property or leaving the facilities. The size of this facility is 47,730 square feet. The silos range in size, but the tallest would be 88 feet. The building, the highest point to the building would be approximately 31 feet in height. This is a general layout or a drawing of what the facility would look like. As you can see, this looks very similar to the other buildings that are within that area as far as the dairy, operating dairies. Number B of your criteria for approval is major shall be taken to ensure the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area of the neighborhood. As I mentioned, this area is an A1 agricultural zone area. The County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map identifies this area and all of the surrounding areas as future agricultural area. There is a Class A dairy across the road from this proposed facility, and there is a digester just to the south of this, adjacent to the south of this facility. The third criteria for consideration of a criteria for a conditional use permit approval is the effects of noise, odor, traffic, and air and water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screening setbacks and orientation. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at its March 20th meeting. At that meeting, they heard testimony. They ultimately, again, approved the conditional use permit with the six conditions that were within the staff report. Staff recommended adding a seventh condition, which was added by the Planning Commission at the meeting, and that was that county planning staff facilitate an annual meeting between Brooklyn and Delaware townships. This facility would be sighted in Delaware Township. Brooklyn Township would be just to the south of this, of the facility. But there has been concerns with other parts of the area with the townships, and so again, staff's belief is that good communication leads to good solutions. But those were the six, seven conditions that were approved with this conditional use permit. Staff's feeling is that these conditional use, or these conditions of approval of the conditional use permit suffice for that C criteria of the conditional use permit. So before you, again, this morning, is this is an appeal of a conditional use permit. The appellant is in attendance this morning. The applicant, I believe, is on the phone. There are representatives of the applicant as well in the meeting today. Per the Lincoln County Code of Ordinances, the Board of Commissioners is responsible with the appeal to either uphold, reverse, or amend the decision of the Planning Commission. Specifically, the amendment would be for the conditions of approval. So you could modify the seven conditions, you could remove a condition, or you can add to a condition if you feel that it'd be appropriate. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff. Otherwise, I can answer questions later, too.
Can we arrange any questions for staff at this time?
I'll ask them after the testimony.
Very good. Toby, do you want the applicant, you said there is someone here in attendance?
Yeah, we, in the past, we've had the appellant go first, and then the applicant is available on the phone after that.
He is on the phone?
Yep.
Or that person's on the phone?
Correct.
Okay. Is the appellant wish to speak?
Yes.
Good morning.
And I would like the overhead, please.
Just for the record, your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Bethany Eric. My address is 46747 291st Street, Centerville, and I have provided a map of where my farm is located in the handout. I stand this morning not only for myself. I have 95 signatures here in a statement of support from my neighbors that wish this conditional use permit to not be approved. So it's not just me. There are 95 people that could not come today that are in opposition to this conditional use permit, and I'm going to delve a little bit deeper into that. The statement that we had folks take a look at and provide signatures on, we went ahead and I gave this to you in your packet, in your handout. You can read the statement at the top. "I do not want a milk condensing facility in our area. I oppose it to protect myself, my family, and my neighbors from hazards to health, safety, and enjoyment of rightfully owned property. I'm concerned about light, odor, water, and air pollution that this facility will create now as well as the cumulative of impact in the future. I'm concerned about increased traffic and degradation of roads in our county and township, property value degradation, environmental cleanup costs, and the overall reduction of the quality of life of residents. Please deny this permit, and if that cannot happen, set reasonable conditions to protect your citizens from the negative impacts as described above." It's a lot of information, but we're concerned about our farms. We're concerned about our area around it because this facility is larger and will produce more pollution than anything you've ever approved in the past. So on the first page of the packet that I provided you, I gave you some information. This is your 2009 county's zoning ordinance, and the underlying portion tell you that you have the right to add conditions to this conditional use permit, to secure safety, to lessen congestion in the streets, to promote health and general welfare, adequate light and air, and prevent overcrowding of the land, and avoid undue concentration of population. Down at the bottom, it indicates the Planning Commission shall impose such conditions that are appropriate and necessary. And that's important, appropriate and necessary, to ensure compliance with a comprehensive plan and to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of such a conditional use permit. Okay, so, you know, I believe that when we're looking at this, you folks really lay a lot of weight on the staff report. So not only have I done this and provided 95 signatures of my neighbors and friends that are around me that have a potential negative impact, I've also provided counter evidence and rebuttal to the staff report. So even though it's indicated as the staff report that there are no unreasonable issues, I'll indicate items one through six. Total load of light, noise, odor, and water and air pollution, reduction of quality of life due to issues in item one, increased traffic impacting safe travel, increased road degradation, property value negative impact, and a potential environmental cleanup costs. Item B that Toby mentioned, measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the character. It will hinder development of undeveloped neighboring properties. I've already had people say, well, I'm not building a house next to that. So it has already hindered at its current size, much less if it gets to look in much bigger. So it will change the development of neighboring properties. It changes whether or not I can have B and B on my property because it's too loud. So let's, let's fix that. Let's make it so they're not so loud. So it will affect our area. Right, so it indicates in item C that your responsibility is to reduce the effects of noise, traffic, air, and water pollution and negative, you know, Toby says it's not going to happen. I don't believe it, and my rebuttal is, is below. Right now, the way that their current plan sits, their trucks and turning trucks will shine right into my living room and toward the highway. The transformers and generators are on the south side of their building aimed at my house and the highway. Loading, let's see, orientation of the building allows some of the loudest portions of their facility to be aimed at my house with the ability to reflect sound off the metal building like a giant speaker. Waste water management is a large concern as the chemicals they'll be using to clean this food-grade facility could leach onto my property and neighboring wells. They place wastewater into lagoons, then spread the chemicals over the fields. How soon will the groundwater be contaminated? Elevators and other large zone facilities do not create chemical wastewater, and we'll get into the zoning question with some of the folks that are here today as well. Elevators, let's see, what is, what is their process for handling wastewater? I'd really like to know that because the creek that runs by them goes right onto my Air quality is a concern because we don't know if this facility is going to create a sour milk smell in our area. We don't know what chemicals will be airborne as a result of this facility. And safety is a concern as they are co-locating a heat source in the evaporation process near an explosion risk of the digester. And there's an article on the back of this packet that indicates what methane does when it explodes with 18,000 cattle dying in Texas. And that's, that's a pretty big concern. So, and the eighth one is who pays for cleanup if contamination does occur from a spill or an accident? So who will help us if our land is damaged? So to clarify, what are we asking for? We're asking for a recusal of any commission member that has a conflict of interest, of course. That's, that's by and large a very important thing. We're asking for water quality protection, air quality protection, environmental or performance bond to protect our citizens and resources from negligence, accident, or disaster, quality of life in our area protection, no noise, odor, smoke, dust, or glare beyond the property line as stated in item four of the existing conditional use permit, mitigation of road damage, safe travel on our roads, safety from potential fire and explosion, and safety from health hazards. So what can you guys do to help us as the 95 constituents and those that are in the room? In addition to that, we'd like you to deny the permit or apply common sense protections. So I'm the type of person that doesn't just bring a problem, also brought a solution. So you'll see on this page, the black, or the un-underlined is the existing conditions that are in the conditional use permit. Okay? So what I'm proposing is that you add the underlying sections. We know number three. One and two is unchanged. Number three, we're knowing that we're adding Brooklyn Township as stated by Toby. And number four, we're strengthening the no offensive noise, odor, smoke, dust, or glare beyond the property line. We're asking for shielding and dampeners. It's nothing too expensive. It's really just common sense to keep the, keep the area looking good and without a problem. Number six, we're asking that we add the word environmental to that condition. And number seven and eight are at your discretion. Bonding and protection is way beyond my pay grade. I know it's, I know it's available. I know we can do that. I know that if, if there was a disaster, what would we do as a county? What would the liability be on the county to, to clean that up? And hours of operation and heaviest truck traffic recommendations? I know it's a lot. Any, any questions on those items?
Board members, any questions for at this time?
I don't have any. Ma'am, just so I can understand, where do you live in relationship to the proposed site?
Okay, that is on, in your packet on, it's, it's right here, so.
Are you the orange dot, or is that?
I am the orange dot.
Okay.
Yes, I am the orange dot. So I am directly half mile south of this facility, and where they're proposing to put it is right here.
Right.
So when their, when their generators are located right here, and all of their truck traffic is going to go around the building and turn left, there's the headlights, they're coming. So tell them to put a fence up, please. I mean, seriously, this is ridiculous. So, and all of their sound, their loudest part of their organization is aimed directly southeast at my farm. So that's just not logical. It's actually quite a thing.
And that road in front of your house there, is that a gravel road?
That's an oil.
That's an oil road?
That's a 291, the oil road.
Okay.
Yeah. So those items, I mean, we're protecting the highway, too, from glare and noise and distraction. So.
And then you, you said something about Airbnb. Do you currently offer that?
I wanted to. I want to. If they can control their noise, I could. That economically disadvantages me if I can't because they're making a mess, that they're not willing to clean up.
Just a question on point number three here, where you talk about permit holders shall comply with the road authorities. You said you wanted to add in Brooklyn Township?
Correct. Planning and zoning had already discussed that, and that was in their, in their notes that they recommended that, and we'll have some folks from Brooklyn here to represent.
Sure. And then, okay, I think I got it. Thank you.
I thank you.
I have no questions at this time. Commissioner Schmidt?
Right, I don't have any right now.
I want to thank you, and we'll see who's next to come up.
I appreciate that. I really do. I hope that you folks hear us and that you'll, you'll impose some common sense protections for our citizens. All right? Thank you.
I ask that the next person that would like to testify in support of the applicant to bring it back to the planning, or the commission to come up and speak, please give your name and address.
Good morning, Dwayne Carlson, 29287 467th Avenue, Centerville. I live a mile and a half south of this proposed facility, and I'm also on Brooklyn Township. We've had in the past quite a few different dealings with, with the township, and I asked for a little bit of leeway here because we're talking about 10 years of, of usage that I've got to try and bring to you in a short period of time. What's happened in the past, I know probably doesn't appeal to you, but we haven't had the best of luck with our roads, and what happened, what happens is we've normally had about $30,000 worth of gravel put out on our roads for maintenance. And since this operation has come to pass, we've been putting about three times that amount, close to $90,000 in gravel for maintenance. With no income coming back in, the road haul agreements aren't in place. They weren't because the, the dairy came in at a, at a low herd size, and I know you probably didn't see this coming either, but then the additions came. So now we're at quite a few more head than what they came in at, and they continue to I have a few maps here of, of what our roads look like. I'm not sure if, if they're going to show up here, Toby, you have. Okay. So this was in 2018, and this shows where that road is located. This is a mile south of the plant or the dairy facility. This was another instance that was in 2019 where a culvert was run over and the road sign was damaged. Then we have large vehicles that, nobody else does this in our, in our township. This is a site which is a mile and a half from their site, running a, a full fertilizer spreader through, over our roads. Every facility that spreads fertilizers runs a tender, but this facility. They bring the fertilizer in and load it on facility and go to the fields that they're That again was in 2019. This is a road that was off the oil road and then comes down what used to be a minimum maintenance road that we upgraded, and it was degraded to bring in manure from that facility. In two days, they ran over 60 loads of manure down our roads without notification. This again was in 2019. This is just showing a portion of that road. This is a close-up of where the duals squished the, the material up through the road. Now, they were dragging the, the differentials on this road before we got them stopped. And we'll move to last year, fall of '22. This is where they had taken a box scraper to our road after we asked them not to maintain. We do maintenance on our own roads, and if we're identified that there's a problem, we'll go out and we'll take care of it. But they ran a box scraper, and you can see most of the material in the, in the field here from the road. That was on this site. Now, last fall, we also had, this is 468. This site was broken down from the, the sides of the road here from the manure management portion of their, their operation. Now, when asked about this and when talked about it, they refer us to their contractors and not taking responsibility for it themselves. But they contract the hauling, the manure management, and the harvesting, and they should be held accountable for all of this. Now, here's just recently, three weeks ago, their new facility, the towers came in down 46, and being as load limits were on, they decided they were going to go down our township road. They did not contact us. We had a local person that just happened to see this happening let us know, so I went out and took some pictures of where they turned off of 46 onto this road. And you can see it was a wide turn. That's where the trailer went across, and this is where the, where the semi-tractor went across the road. Here's one of the towers going across a county-posted bridge on that road. Here's one of the other towers. This shows an indication of where they came from, and this facility was purchased in Georgia and trucked up to the dairy. There's your weight limit that was posted by the county on that bridge. This is 468, the route that they took, and another mile north here is where they ended up. There's the towers, there's six of them in place there, and there's probably more by now. And this is just something that we can't control. I mean, as a township, we all have, you know, our own jobs to do, and we, we were lucky that an individual had happened to take a few of these pictures, and then I backed him up with a few more. I just want you to be aware of, this is what we have to deal with, and we don't have any protections in place for. Now, we'd love to have a road haul agreement with Dan Dolks and for them to take responsibility for the damages that are being caused. I'm fifth generation on the property that I'm on, and I try and take care of it as well as I can. I try and put my time in at the, at the township level. If I don't have time to do that, I do it, and I, I just would ask that you would make them accountable for what they're doing, make their contractors accountable, put some bonding in place or something to have additional help for the township. Again, this is, this has been growing to a point where, where do you guys say this is a commercial facility or an industrial facility? We're in an ag area out there that has basically an industrial facility that's changing product onsite. I foresee them to have even more truck traffic because the facility they're proposing to put in here is going to be far and above what they can take for product at the site right now. So there'll be multiple sites that will be bringing milk into this facility. The other thing that happens is how big is too big? We've got two local dairies that are left there, Nerling Dairy, and they're just to the south, and we have Larson Dairy that's just off to the east of this facility. And they're being pushed out by a large corporate entity like this. So we need some protections in place for those people that have been here their whole life. Thank you.
Dwayne, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you said you talked to they, and you said they told you to go talk to the contractors, what is the name of the person you talked to that told you that?
Garrett Dan Dolk was in place at that time, and we've had some conversations with Tim in the past, and he was unwilling to give us a haul road agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is there any other questions?
I have one question, just for clarity.
Sure.
In the damages that you're displaying, majority of that is from the operations of either farming the land and dispersing the waste management?
Yes, that's correct.
Not with the milk processing facility, just for clarity?
This, this last few pages was for the milk processing.
For the transportation.
For the transportation, yes, it was.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Dwayne, just a quick question. Has the county utilized SB 1 where you could opt out for extra revenue to address your road situation?
We do have a 50 cent per capita opt-out SB 1 in place that generates about $7,500 a year.
Okay, all right. Do we give you any money back from wheel tax?
Very little.
Very little?
See, the, the facility is not in our township, so then we don't qualify for that. Thank you.
Who would like to be next to come up and speak? Got to be quick around here, but we've got plenty of time to get you everyone up. And again, name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Holmberg. I'm the chairman of Brooklyn Township, and my address is 46551 293rd Street, Centerville, South Dakota, 57014. And I'm here representing Brooklyn Township, and we oppose the conditional use permit that you're talking about here for. And we oppose the conditional use permit that you're talking about here for Mincota Holdings for the milk condensing plant. You know, the reason Brooklyn Township opposes this permit is because of the problems we have had with the Dendalk facilities in the past. Our problems with the Dendolks occurred before the first dairy was even in operation. We're talking about roads here again. They were cutting silage in preparation for the dairy coming. On the day in question, it had rained an inch and a half in the AM and in the afternoon they were out cutting silage and cutting deep trenches in our roads. They were using township road 465 Avenue and 241st Street to haul silage to the dairy. These trenches were probably approximately 10 inches deep and roads were placed, you know, with huge chunks of mud that was coming out of the fields, onto the roads also. They took it upon themselves to come back and push that mud into our township road ditches and then place some poor quality sandy gravel in the tracks. I was called by a local resident telling me that he'd almost had an accident on 465th Avenue. I drove over to look at the road and saw they had, you know, tried to fix it. I then called Tim Dendalk Jr. and told him that this was not acceptable because of some of the, if someone got hurt, it's, you know, it's up to the township and their liability. We would be the ones liable. So we told them we would have to be doing the maintenance on these and of course, we need to make sure that the material that's being used is proper to meet our specifications As Dwayne pointed out, there's also been damage to culverts and road signs. And one of the other things that, you know, on October 25th of '21, they illegally dug through one of our township roads on 467th Avenue between 291st Street and 292nd Street. Garrett Dendalk called me at 10:00 AM and asked about putting a culvert through our township road. He said the contractor was ready to work on it. I told him that they would need a permit from Brooklyn Township, that they would have to have approval before any work was done. He said he would call the contractor and tell him to put a hold on that. I called Supervisor Dwayne Carlson and we drove over there to the site at about 10:25 AM. When we arrived, the culvert was already dug in through our road and a worker that was still there was just finishing covering it up and packing the gravel in a little bit. I called Garrett Dendalk, left a voicemail and then a text message for him and he called me back in about 30 minutes. I told him what the contractor was doing and that they would have to remove that culvert and repair the road. Dwayne and I left at about 12 noon. At 2 PM, I went back over to the site. They were just finishing removing the culvert and trying to pack it back in. While I was there, the manure pumping contractor arrived. He confronted me, was very upset, was cursing at me, telling me how stupid it was to take the culvert out. I told him that they hadn't followed the proper procedures, permits, or laws. He then told me that he had informed the dairy a month ago that they needed to contact Brooklyn Township. So of course, then I told him, why are you cursing at me? You're just telling me that a month ago you told them they needed to contact us, but they didn't. Since that time, you know, we have looked and seen that state statute 31-3213 says that the township, we should not allow the private business to dig through our roads and so we don't. That's a, you know, a private business and they're not supposed to be doing that to our roads, especially without any kind of permission. I've been called numerous times by citizens of our township complaining about the conditions on our roads after hundreds of silage trucks have cut through them, several calls about excessive dust. There are times when the dust in the air is so, you know, it'll be two miles long and you can't see for two miles with the dust that's coming up from behind all these trucks. And this goes on day and night. They basically run pretty near all night also. Been called numerous times about excessive speed on our township roads by the silage trucks and that they don't stop at the stop signs. There's several citizens here that'll be, you know, able to tell you about that also. I'm very concerned that there will be a tragic accident. Only the Lord knows why there hasn't been one or more up to this point in time. Several people have told me about near misses and accidents. In fact, Dwayne Carlson and myself were nearly run into by a silage truck while we were out doing township business. On March 20th of 2023, here at the Lincoln County Planning and Zoning Meeting, Tim Dendalk stood up and said, and I quote, "A truck from this facility should never enter Brooklyn Township." Well, commissioners, as Dwayne pointed out and showed you pictures, they came through our township with overloaded trucks over a bridge that shouldn't be not carrying that kind of weight. And so if you're wondering why Brooklyn Township is a little skeptical of what some of these things these people are doing, that's why. It appears that we are constantly being told something and other things happen. I don't feel that the Dendolks and their operation have been truthful to Brooklyn Township or the citizens and the community. I would like to ask you not to permit the facility until the questions about this facility and the Dendolks have been answered. You know, we're talking about road haul agreements. Yep, that was very, you know, at that zoning meeting, Brooklyn was added to that. But these agreements need to be worked out. Just because you ask them to meet with us doesn't mean that they're going to agree to anything. There needs to be some teeth to this thing so that both sides can come to agreement. But that needs to be done before you issue the permit. Because once you issue the permit, it's a real problem for us to get anything taken care of. It's much easier to do it before they're permitted. We need manure management agreements with the township and the county on the roads. And the haul, you know, right now they're pumping this manure. They're running these lines through the county's culverts and a township culverts. And I realize that's a good thing as far as not all the weight on the roads, but they're putting those hoses in our township right away. So who's liable there again? It'll be the township or the county that's liable. They should be required to put those manure lines, once they come through the culverts, out into the farm fields, not in our township road ditches or across our roads. They've also done that where they've placed the hoses on our roads and tried to put up little barricades which are not legal barricades. And so some of these things need to be taken care of before you permit this facility. As Bethany stated, we're very concerned about the water pollution, the chemicals that this new dairy, milk plant will be using. I don't know if you've had any studies done to show you, and do you know which chemicals they'll be using and what the effects are? To me, it's up to the commission to look into some of these things before you permit it so that you have the correct information to make a decision, knowing what kind of environmental problems these could concern. Concerned about the air pollution, concerned about the odor pollution, all these things that Bethany previously mentioned. So I would like to ask that this time that you do not permit the Dendolks permit to do this. And at the minimum, they need to be bonded on all these different things before you allow this to happen. We need some protection. Obviously, if some tragedy happens and, you know, you're talking millions of dollars worth of damage, I would like to know that it's bonded and not just supposedly covered with liability insurance, which I don't know if you require them to prove that they have enough coverage there either. So I thank you for your time. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Sort of get this sort of out in a timely manner. What do you want the road haul agreement to say?
I guess that needs to be to get together with them, which we're supposed to do, but, you know, there at that meeting or on here, it talks about the county will ask them to get, will arrange something. I've already talked to them once about it. You know, I think that all needs to be worked out. I don't have any specifics on exactly what, but as Dwayne pointed out, in Brooklyn Township, you know, these facilities are not generating any tax income for us.
Do you have any other, do you have, does your township have road haul agreements with any other entity right now?
No, but we have no other entity like this.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Get it resolved. Yeah, thank you.
But no other entity has hundreds of trucks.
Right.
One right after the other, running on roads basically 24 hours a day.
With regard, I'm going to ask the same question about the manure management agreement. What would you like to see done there?
I guess I would like to see some bonding on that. I would like to stipulate that they do not run in our right of ways. They have had spills and I don't know if that was ever anything brought to the county on that as far as what kind of cleanup there should have been. You know, they're pumping millions of gallons of product there and I don't know what limitations or protections the people of our township or county have. I think you need to know some of those things before you allow more of this to go on.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. I'll refer back to, after we hear something, I have some questions for people that want to put it in.
Okay. Quick question, Steve. What with your counsel have you looked at restriction wise or control wise over your roads that is given to the township? Have you put in place or looked at putting in place?
We have talked with the Dendolks before. We did get compensated some very first year. You know, we have talked about trying to meet with them and haven't gotten a meeting put together. But that's something that I guess we're trying to meet with LTAP about this, what kind of traffic and how much damage is actually being done. We can see the easily visible damage. I guess visiting with the people from the engineering firm LTAP, that they had told me that one legally loaded truck would equal 9,000 vehicles crossing the road. The weight of that one truck would equal a traffic of 9,000 cars. But we're talking hundreds of trucks in a day on a township road. There are just a lot of things that need to be worked out and we're trying to get together with that engineering firm within a few days here.
So you haven't, in any of your meetings, had any specific questions about load limits, speed limits, any of that at this point?
Well, we have certainly talked about it at our meetings. I guess we hate to restrict. There's load limits on, no different than your county highways. That applies to the townships also. As far as speed limits, it's, the speed limits are at every, wherever any oil road crosses through, past a township, there's speed limit signs there. But do we want to go out and lower the speed limit on all our township roads to 25 miles an hour? I don't know that we really want to do that. We're not trying to penalize everybody else on our roads too that aren't driving a loaded
Only comment I'll have on that is unfortunate, a lot of times we do not get to identify a specific user, a truck that's loaded legally is a truck loaded legally, when we have to treat everyone the same on that fact. And I'm just kind of curious if the township had looked at what they could do legally, but it would affect all members and I do appreciate that recognition, so thank you.
And I'm not necessarily trying to say that all these silage trucks are overloaded, but there's just, there's just so many of them and a constant pounding on our roads. Even last year when it was so dry, they're still falling through some of our roads. It's just too much weight and too continuous that roads were not designed for that. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
If you have more questions, we can talk about it later.
Would there be anybody that'd like to speak concerning anything other than the roads maybe, so we can keep the topic changing a little bit? I have a gentleman here that stood up.
Good morning. My name is Fred Holmberg. I live at 1021 Main Street in Centerville, South Dakota, 57014. I'm retired from facilities management at University of South Dakota in Vermillion. During the 40 years that I was employed there, portions of my duty included work with asbestos hazard management plans and PCB transformer oil removal projects and hazardous chemical I inherited a parcel of land and a house less than five miles southwest of the milk condensing plant. The home was occupied and I'm concerned about the impact construction and operation of the milk condensing plant may have on the health and well-being of those who live in the vicinity. As a community member and landowner, I am here to express concern and continued support for approval of permits to the Den Balk Dairy continued expansion, especially without more information on the chemicals to be used, water runoff plans and waste management. Particular concern are the family of chemicals known as forever chemicals, which do not break down for years, and the family of chemicals used to sanitize food processing equipment. I believe that these chemicals pose a threat to water, soil, and air. I would caution you from approving any facility that uses these chemicals from the list chemicals in its operation. This large industrial operation continues to lessen the quality of our livelihoods. Please consider the risk that this dairy's continued operation poses for the community when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did someone raise, any questions for him? Commissioner Schmidt? Thank you. Did someone raise their hand? Thank you.
He's a lot quicker than I am this morning.
Well, let's see.
My name is Don Hilt and I live at 4655292nd Street. We're basically Highway 17 and mile and a half west on 292nd. So we're about two miles from the first dairy. Back when all this started, we brought a lot of these concerns up to the commission. Maybe you weren't part of the commission at that time. And this is why, because we could, a lot of us could see that this was going to get big and it was going to go kind of haywire. And then we started having the problems that have been brought up, such as the roads, the concerns with the water and so forth. This is, I guess I got to ask a few questions. At what point is it not agriculture? When does it become industrial? It's already becoming industrial and time and time again, in the United States and other countries all over the world, we see what big industry does to the environment, to habitat, to the little homeowners when it's left unchecked. it's left unchecked and just left to run on its own. It's completely devastating to communities. So there has to be some oversight. Something got to be done. I don't know what the answers are. I really don't. But I'm willing to discuss options, absolutely. The next question I have is, if any of you commission members have this going on in your backyard, is it your property values that might be at risk? Is it your groundwater that might be at risk? How far away from you, from all of this, do you live? Because a lot of these concerns, I've been living there for 20-plus years, and I love living there. I'd hate to see something happen to it, but at the same time, I want to know that my property is worth something after all these years of hard work on that property, when I'm ready to move to a smaller place, which the way I feel some mornings, it's gonna be sooner versus later. And the next thing, do they really need the approval of the commission? If they're bringing in tanks and moving forward before the permits even gone forward, do they really even bother with you guys? It doesn't appear like they do, in which case, somebody needs to put a stop to that, because I'm pretty sure I wouldn't get away with that. I guess that's about all I can really say, is maybe, who are we, who are we working for here, exactly? That's my concern. So, thank you very much.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Is there, again-
We've, we've spent a lot of time. Is there something, somebody else would like to add? I have a lady standing up. Please come up. If we can, if there's nothing new on this side of it, I would like to transition, if possible, so we can get us all home before midnight tonight. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Joyce Tavet, 46802, 292nd Street, Beersford, South Dakota. I am a health professional. I'm a registered dietitian. I've lived in the area for 31 years. I'm about a mile and a half south of the dairy. And respectfully, commissioners, this conditional use permit for a milk condensing plant is not zoned, classified correctly. I worked for the state of South Dakota for a number of years with administrative rules and statutes. I worked as a, basically as an inspector for the state of South Dakota. This is, don't let this go forth. It's not correct. It is zoned for ag in a rural service district, not industrial. To dovetail with the previous gentleman that spoke, we are talking industrial, and I'm gonna go into that a little bit more, and how that is. Okay. I'm gonna do a little bit of my dietitian work here. This is taken from basically the Dairy Processing Handbook, 2015. This is the, this is the bible that they use, so to speak. It's the manufacturer of condensed milk, and it's considered a large-scale industry. The industry itself is considered large-scale industry. And this is a process they go through. They go through a standardization of the milk, and that's where they take the milk fat and the dairy, the milk solids, and they get it standardized into certain content. Then it goes into a heat treatment, standardization of the casing, the protein. Then it goes into an evaporation, then into a homogenization. And a homogenization involves dispersing the fat molecules. It goes into a cooling process, which by the way, takes a lot, a lot of water. And then it goes into a sterilization process, and it's, there's a process called a UHT. That's one of the forms of standard, of a sterilization treatment. We're talking over 135 degrees Celsius. That's a lot of heat, and that's a minimum. And then it goes into your packaging, your canning, sterilization products, another cooling, and then storage. Again, I want to specify that the manufacturer of a condensed milk is a large-scale industry. Now I'll get into the codes. Codified Law 921A2, this is all state of South Dakota, a rural service district, lands included. The rural service district shall include only such plotted or unplotted lands as in the judgment of the governing body at the time of the adoption of the ordinance are rural in character, are used or usable for agriculture, and are not developed for commercial, industrial. You can read more if you like, but I wanted to focus in on that, that we're talking about a rural service district. This is not urban. Okay, what is commercial or industrial? I already have established that the manufacture of condensed milk is a large-scale industry. Commercial or industrial activity. For the purpose of this chapter, a commercial, going back to the codified law, state of South Dakota, 312971.13. For the purpose of this chapter, a commercial or industrial activity is an activity generally recognized as commercial or industrial by zoning authorities in the state with an exception. Outdoor advertising structures, now we're getting into the ag use, including forestry, ranching, grazing, and farming. And then it goes into other things like wayside farms and wayside stands, so on and so forth. But what I want to focus in on is the ag use, including forestry, ranching, grazing, and farming. Where does it say, milk processing plant? Is that farming? That, commissioners, is the question before you today. This is industrial. The use commit, use, the use conditional commit, permit as stated today, does not conform with the proposed zoning ordinance, and cannot be allowed to be permitted as it stands. Thank you for listening and for your time, and I will take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Is there any questions at this time? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Megan Eisenboss. I live at 713 South Maple Avenue in Sioux Falls. I am a market vegetable grower and a food systems organizer for Dakota Rural Action. I grew up on a small farm in Turner County nearby, and I have a deep love of South Dakota's rural communities, small towns, and farmer populations. Farming communities, like the group of people here today that showed up to express their testimony, are an increasingly rare and integral part of our country. First, I would like to acknowledge the people in this room that are here in opposition to the continued expansion of the industrial dairy operation in question. And I know not everyone was able to give testimony because there are other things on the agenda, but I just want you to acknowledge, there are a lot of people, I don't know if you want to raise your hand if you're here in opposition and give your testimony that way. But this is a community that supports each other, and as industrialized operations continue to expand, fewer farmers are able to compete in the market, and thus, fewer families will be sustained in these rural areas. Schools in small towns will have fewer children, and small businesses will have less economic support to remain open. The conditional permit in question is to construct a facility of extreme size and capacity. As Tim Dandock stated at the planning and zoning meeting last month, the dairy's current need is only 15 loads of milk, while the facility will process a total of 40 loads. What good businessman would invest in a facility three times the size needed if not intending to expand? Traffic will not be reduced if it includes 60% of the milk to process will be brought in. Increased consolidation of animals onsite also would create even greater concern for worker and neighbors' safety. How will small dairies in Lincoln and in neighboring counties compete with this facility? Is continued support from the county for this operation to expand also supporting all in Lincoln County and in rural communities? Additionally, Lake Norton and Brookings, South Dakota, have similar milk processing facilities. Both are zoned industrial. Allowing the construction of this industrial facility will transform the landscape of farmland in its rural nature and the ability for others to farm and live safely with a quality of life. It is for these reasons that I ask you to repeal and oppose the conditional use permit for the construction and further expansion of this dairy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Megan, just a quick question.
Yes.
You mentioned two facilities that are in other counties that are classified as milk industrial.
Yes.
But what are those two facilities?
The one in Brookings is by the Bell Company, and it's a similar processing to make a cheese byproduct. In Lake Norton, it's also, from what I could find, also includes condensing and evaporating of milk.
Those are cheese plants, aren't they? Baby Bell and the one at Lake Norton? Those are cheese facilities.
Yeah. And the milk condensing plant, if it's taking out the water, it's making a subsidiary byproduct that will be produced, or changed into other dairy products like cheese and yogurt, is my understanding of what a milk condensing plant is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that'd like to share testimony that is unique at all by chance? I'm just trying to save everyone's-
I'll be brief, Mike.
Very good.
I'll cut this off here. Looks like it's the last one.
I'll, I'll hope that this is the last one, unless truly I'm not going to limit anybody if they have truly something unique to share.
Good morning. Dave Gillespie, 1125 East Elder Street, Canton, South Dakota, formerly rural Canton. I've served on the commission, as most of you know, for 12 years. Eight of those years, I represented people on this aisle and this aisle. And when Governor, former Governor Dugard talked about bringing in the 4,250 head, you know, they called it value-added ag. Well, that was pretty accepted, for the most part, and then it, then it grew from there to the east. And when is, when has it become enough is enough? You've also heard testimony on the roads from Brooklyn Township supervisors, chairmans. I, you have to put yourself in these people's shoes that live out there, that deal with that. I won't be long on this, but we, you know, this, this thing where they can handle 15 loads of milk, but they can process up to 40? Maybe there should be a cap on that, because we're taking away truckloads, but then we're adding to it by bringing in outside milk. So, something to think about. Anyway, we also, at one of the meetings, there was a commissioner, I thought, that kind of walked out with the proponents of this, and it looked a little bit odd, you know, after the, the talk of it and discussion, so. But anyway, that's all I have. I'll be brief, like I said, so.
Any questions for David Gillespie?
No.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? With that, I'm gonna close that side of it. Oh, we got one here. Thank you. I will make this the last one. Thank you.
I'm Dave Bierman. I'm from 519 540th Street, Marcus, Iowa. I work for Vanzi Enterprises, and all I have to say is that Tim Dandock and their dairies in Iowa and South Dakota have been good people to work with, good customers.
Okay, that would be the proponent side. That's fine, thank you. You'll lead us off that way. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition to the appeal to the commission? Yes.
He's a proponent.
Yes, he's a proponent, opposition to the appeal.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Toby, can we bring up the picture of just the site and the roads?
It's that double negative thing, Jim.
Do you have the one that I sent you that was the picture?
My lies.
I come in at the double negative.
Yes.
Very good.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Paul Casboth. I'm with A1 Development Solutions out of Sioux Falls. I live at 4404 East Brookline Circle, also in Sioux Falls. I'm here on behalf of the Dandock family today. As you know, unfortunately, Tim couldn't be here. I believe he's still available on the phone and certainly happy to answer any questions. I will do my best to, to answer those questions. And what I'd like to start with, I think, is a little bit about the multiple components we've been talking about today here. There's, there's a lot about roads, Brooklyn Township. Certainly, I think it's clear, there have been problems in the past, there's been issues. We do all know, and we work with, my firm works with a bunch of projects across state, especially when it comes to silage cutting, halage, those types of things, and especially silage that time of year, there's, there can be challenges. It's, it's fast, it's furious, in a sense, wet years, it's, it's tough on the roads. And it's the same with anybody bringing grain, grains out of the fields in those years. So, I know from the previous hearing, the Dandocks had committed to sitting down with Brooklyn, and I know part of this process, just to reiterate what Toby already shared, is if this is approved, one of the conditions is getting together, both Delaware, Brooklyn, and Dandocks. And Tim has reiterated multiple times to me as well, happy to do that and, and want to work together and figure out a better way to, to work together proactively when it does come to the road challenges. So, I would just point out in that, these are dairy-related things we're talking about here. It's the operation of the dairies that already exist, that have been in existence for some time. What we're here today to talk about is this RO plant, separate permit, separate request. It's up here on the screen. Couple points of clarification. I believe it was pointed that that was going here. It goes here north of the digesters, is the site that Toby had pointed out, that 20-acre parcel. So that's gonna be right up in this area. So, first, I'll just talk a little bit about this RO plant, and what does it do, and why are they even doing it? Why, why does somebody want to do this? And to, to break it down for simple math, for every 100 pounds of milk that goes into this plant, 40 pounds is gonna be the milk that will go to processing somewhere. This isn't a processing site. And 60 pounds of that is gonna be water. And as surprising as that may sound, the purpose of this plant, the value of the plant, is the water. Because what that does for the Dandocks is that 60 gallons, or 60 pounds of water that's gonna come out of that 100 pounds of milk, 52 of those pounds are gonna be used for cow drinking water. It's gonna go right straight back to the dairies. The other eight pounds is gonna be used for washing, cleaning, equipment. That's water that they have to buy today, and that's also water that they have to pay to ship down the road to go to the cheese plants. When the, when the raw milk gets to the cheese plants, and I don't understand all these processes at the plants, but they go through a process like this. There's different filtration, RO being one of them, and they separate the milk into these different components, and then they proceed with the manufacturing. So what does that mean for truck traffic? And there's been a lot of numbers, and I'll, I'll try to explain these best I can. Right now, today, from these two dairies, you've got 14 loads of milk that are leaving, that are going down the road to plants. By and large, from Dakota Plains, that milk's gonna go south to 291st, and it's gonna head east to the interstate. Most of it from Mount Hope also is gonna go south, go east to the interstate here on 291st. Some trucks will leave at times, come out this way and go east over here to 469. Some trucks will leave at times, come out this way and go east over here to 469th. That's where the milk's going today, fourteen trucks. So, now the blue lines that we put in this picture, now instead with the RO plant, that milk's going to come here. The milk from Dakota Plains now will only pass Tim's house, him and his family, go to the plant. Mount Hope will literally cross the road, go to the RO plant. What comes out of that plant, because there again, sixty percent is water that's been removed, now amounts to five and a half truckloads a day that will leave this total footprint, come south to 291st, go east over to I-29. So, fourteen loads of milk will become five and a half. There isn't manufacturing, there isn't processing. It's pulling the water out of the milk is what they're doing at this facility for the reasons that I mentioned. And I know for certainty, at least one plant in the region is doing essentially this at their cheese plant because they're getting more milk than that plant can take today. They take the milk in, they RO it, now they've condensed it, in a sense. They shrink three loads essentially of milk down into one, and now they're able to ship that milk to some of their other plants that are hours away and hundreds of miles. They can't feasibly do that if they don't remove that water first. So, the other advantage for the Dan-Docks by doing this is it opens their market up more because now they're shipping out their milk, can go further distances, and it can still work. So, that's kind of the third component, I would say, as to why would somebody want to do this and make this significant investment that this plant's going to be. So, when we talk about the total truck impact, as Tim Dan-Dock had said at the first hearing, this has more capacity in this plant to handle more milk. We don't know that that's going to happen, but certainly if it proves doable to get more milk and they're maximizing efficiency of plants, certainly they would want to do that, and they're not going to pretend that's not the case. Maximum capacity, to put the numbers in perspective, it could take in essentially double of what it will take today. That's another fourteen loads of milk that could come in, which would be another five and a half loads going out. So, there again, the fourteen that go in today from these two dairies aren't going to leave. They're going to follow the blue lines. Essentially, they're staying right there, five and a half coming out. If the day ever comes that this thing is at absolute max capacity, then there would be up to fourteen, whoop, up to fourteen more loads of milk, new loads of milk, would come in on 291st, most conceivably. It doesn't seem sensible it would come from anywhere else, would come up into the plant, follow the red line, and that's another five and a half loads that go out. So, the net difference there would be twenty-five loads of milk, fourteen new coming in off of 291st, and now eleven total trucks going out. So, twenty-five net truck in and out from 291st, off-site, let's call it. So, for what it's worth, on 291st, I looked up on the DOT website for average daily traffic counts on 291st, across right here, this stretch we're looking at, and from a twenty-seventeen count was the last one that I had found, it was four hundred and forty-five vehicles a day travel up and down that road. And I would venture to guess today that's five hundred plus. But at four hundred and forty-five, that's total traffic. What DOT has told me in the past, having worked with them on numerous projects for years, is on a county highway like this, figure probably fifteen to twenty percent of that is trucks, at least, up to twenty-five. Just kind of depends what industry is in a given area and where trucks are hauling product back and forth. So, it sounds like it could be a lot of trucks, and we go back to the comment of forty trucks total. That gets back to if this thing was setting off by itself somewhere and didn't have half of the milk coming from the two dairies that are right there today, it could take in, what would the math be, twenty-eight total semis full of milk, and it could haul eleven out. So, I guess thirty-nine gets right at the forty. So, that's where your forty number comes from. So, that was a lot of numbers to try to go through. Hopefully, that helps. We had seen the pictures of the plant, and it's primarily all concrete facility building. All the processing's done inside. The trucks will go into bays, unload, very similar to how milk is unloaded at a cheese plant, for any of you that have seen one or toured one. From a noise perspective, the trucks would be the only thing you would see or hear. I mean, if you think of, again, going back to cheese plants that maybe some of you have seen with loading and unloading, I mean, those are all located in communities. And so, that should give you some idea as far as noise that would come out of that type of a facility. And again, I would just reiterate, the milk is going to go through membranes that creates the separation, pulls the water out, and then that water's going to go, get used at the dairies. And so, from oversight, chemical perspective, any chemicals used in the process, which is really more for the cleaning, is all USDA food grade as it has to be, just like any cheese plant would have, or the dairy needs to use for anything that has to do with equipment that milk goes through. And the oversight of this, the environmental side, is actually going to be really from two different components within Dana, Department of Natural, Department of Ag and Natural Resources. It's both the general permit folks that oversee the dairies and also the milk inspector folks, division. And I've been in a couple of those meetings already that the Dan-Docks have had with them as they've been planning for this, to make sure that Dana's on board, understands the facility, how anything would be managed. And just like anything with Dana, they can't just have a discharge with any kind of waste stream, which again, should be really kind of a net zero from this because the water that's coming out of the milk is going to be reused at the dairy. That's water they use today that they buy for drinking of the cows, cleaning of the equipment. That's recycled as much as it can be. Eventually, remnants of that, whatever's left, would end up in lagoons. This will be the exact same. And so, Dana will oversee and permit this, same as the dairies. I would reiterate, I guess, one more time, on the roads with the dairy, I guess, hopefully out of this, a positive that has come, if this is approved or reapproved, is that everybody has agreed to sit down and include Brooklyn Township in those discussions and figure out a better path forward. That really does pertain to the dairies, but at least this does put everybody on record saying, yes, let's get together and work through that. For what it's worth, other projects that we've helped with over the years, it's pretty common when it comes to a township that only sees, generally only sees, traffic from hauling of manure or primarily hauling of silage, it's a one-time-a-year thing in most cases, that the township and the facility will work together, document the condition of the roads prior to the hauling, and then go and redocument the condition of the roads when it's done, and then the dairy comes in and helps take care of any cleanup that has to be done from there and foot that bill that's above normal maintenance. It's very common to see, and I would say, from talking with the Dan-Docks, that's their commitment to working through that with Brooklyn. But nothing from this RO plant that we're talking about here, barring a truck going the wrong way, which they admit, this truck that hauled some equipment coming out of Georgia went the wrong way. Sometimes Google doesn't have the best ideas, but that should be very rare occasion.
Any questions?
Mr. Casboth, we've got several items here that I'd like to have you talk about. If I understand what you're saying is that the majority of the water that is used in this process is actually recycled?
Correct.
And back to the dairy itself to feed or to water their cattle, right?
Correct.
So, they've taken all of the yucca or whatever is in there and made it palatable for animals to use, right? So, we don't, and whatever else is left over goes into a lagoon, similar to what the dairy has, right?
Yep.
Okay. Can you talk about, since I think it was the young lady from Dakota Rural Action that talked about the facility up at Lake Norton and at Brookings, that they had a processor similar to this, right? Is that correct?
I would say those cheese plants do some form of RO when they receive the milk because they need to break the milk down into the components they need for their processes.
Well, my point would be about, as we talked about, noise and odor and smoke and dust on this thing. So, to your knowledge, what kind of noise, odor, smoke, and dust does this plant emit?
None. There should be none. The milk comes in, it's offloaded, and it's never exposed. I mean, that's part of the process. It's going to go through a piping system and a membrane system that does this filtration that it needs, and then you get your water and you get the stuff that gets hauled out to the actual plants. No manufacturing takes place in this facility.
We also have potential fire or explosion risks. I mean, is there a fire or explosion risk involved in these plants?
In something like this where it's milk coming in and milk going through membranes? I can't imagine what that would be. There's, this isn't methane, there's none of those things going on. It's literally filtering milk to pull the water out.
Okay. All right. That's all right right now. I may have some more here in a minute, but...
Well, our time is running out. Stay on a ten o'clock timeline for our...
And I know there's a lot of folks that want to speak on behalf, but as a group, too, we'll try to do a lot of me-too to be brief.
I will just tell you, I have a ten o'clock. We will be adjourning, so if we want to not sit here for another four hours, we're going to get through this in six minutes or four minutes.
I will get out of the way.
Very good.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions for you, sir.
Sure.
And I want to cut to the quick. What do you want the road hall agreement to say?
Well, in Delaware, they've got a hall road agreement, and that's what these roads are that are going to continue to be used. I think, well, basically, what my understanding of the Delaware road hall that they've had from day one from Dakota Plains is these roads that are going to be used, they're responsible for all maintenance above normal township maintenance. So, they also paid to upgrade the roads to begin with so that they're built appropriately for this level of traffic, which keeps your maintenance under control, but the dairy is responsible for everything above that. And I believe Louis that has been with Delaware Township spoke at the last hearing and said, too, that they've went above and beyond on those roads that are getting used all the time.
And is the dairy willing to do that in Brooklyn Township, too?
That's my understanding from what they said at the last hearing, that get together and figure out what's a reasonable plan there. Again, that's occasional use, but when it is, for like silage cutting, it's heavy use for, say, a two-week period, and come up with a plan for if there is damage to a Brooklyn Township road during that, then they'll come in and make that right with Brooklyn.
Yeah. Here's what I'm trying to figure out. I'm not casting any aspersions, but you all wanted to get the permit here today, but you didn't sit down with Brooklyn beforehand, and I don't know if it's a scheduling issue or whatnot, but I'm just trying to figure out why that didn't happen before today's hearing. Do you know why?
I don't know why. All I know from Tim, and Tim could answer that, I believe, if he's still on, that they reached out recently here and said, hey, you know, we would like to get together, we understand, we need to do that. And certainly, as part of this, the agreement is, we're going to get together. It's an actual condition on this permit that you have to, and try to work this out. And certainly, you guys would always, as the commission, have the right to pull the dairy back in under the dairy permit and say, we don't think you're doing what you should do, and we're going to impose additional conditions if you're not honoring what you agreed to.
And then just last, one last question for right now. There's this question from some of the opponents here about chemicals used in the process. Can you just enlighten us and tell us how that works?
I would have to lean on Tim for that. As far as what's used, I don't know the names of the chemicals or anything. Tim?
Good morning. The chemicals used are the same as in a milk parlor. There's no chemicals in the milk. It's just for washing pipes and equipment.
Which are what chemicals? Just name them. Just name them.
I can send an email of the list of chemicals. It's, I don't know them. Our plant manager knows all the chemical lists, but they're approved by the State of South Dakota and the USDA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are on a very limited time unless we all want to sit here for four hours, because like I had indicated before, we have a ten o'clock Board of Equalization that will be starting. So, unless someone's really anxious to get up and speak and wants to sit here for four hours with us, I'm going to end testimony. Anybody in objective, object to that? Board? I think it's in our wheelhouse now. We've heard a lot of testimony in opposition. I think of a lot, in my opinion, a lot of issues that are concerning the current operation, not so much maybe about what is being proposed. There are definitely some concerns that have been addressed on that. Have those questions been answered to a point where we can move forward? I'm asking for a motion?
Well, I, you know...
We can either uphold or change.
I know you're running on this, but the one thing that it seems to me to be the road block here is the roads, road issue. We haven't never heard from Delaware Township apparently has, doesn't have as many issues as Brooklyn seems to have, and I'm not denying that at all. I have lived on a township road where Lewis and Clark went, so I understand all of this stuff. But it would be nice to have had this done prior to this meeting. So, Commissioner Aaron's, I know that's one of the questions you asked. Are we looking at, until we get that agreement in place, we take action at that time?
Yeah. Here's my impression. I mean, I've got a lot of thoughts about this, both positive and negative. You know, just because this is an agricultural product doesn't mean it's an ag use. It's number one. I mean, let's say, for example, we put Smithfield out in the middle of that same field, would it be an ag use or would it be an industrial use? My guess is it'd probably be an industrial use, even though it's considered quote-unquote agricultural product. Number two, it's value-added, it's part of the local economy, and it supports local producers. That's a positive. I think twenty years ago, Lincoln County was down to five hundred head of dairy cattle. Now, we're at like fifteen or twenty thousand. That's great. But with growth comes people tearing up the roads and tearing up the countryside. I think the allegation was basically made, I think I counted it up, there's like seven different violations of South Dakota law, you know, basically all revolving around taking care of roads and taking care of infrastructure. I mean, let's face it, we don't have the infrastructure out there to take care of this kind of facility. It's all getting torn up, and it's all getting, and it's all done by the people who use the dairy and who probably, to a lesser extent, will use the milk manufacturing process. So, what, but at the same time, what I heard from a lot of the opponents today was not necessarily, let's kill this deal. What I was hearing from many of them was, let's make it right. How do we make two things work at the same time? How do we make the dairy work and how do we take care of the countryside?
Commissioner Aaron's, I'm afraid I'm going to have to because we have to stay on schedule. I'm going to ask for a motion of one of two things. Either we postpone this for four hours until the end of our Board of Equalization, or we table this measure until our next or some other meeting. That's the only motion I'm looking for at this time.
Well, I think there's some things that need to be figured out yet, so...
Absolutely. One hundred percent. So, should we do this at the end of our Board of Equalization?
No.
Or would you like to bring it? So, I accept a motion to postpone or table this until...
Postpone it one week.
For, is our...
After May 2nd.
After May 2nd or on May 2nd?
After May 2nd.
So, May 9th?
We can't do it on the 2nd.
While we have Board of Equalization, I'd like to not get into the same situation. So, if we do it on May 9th...
What time is Board of Equalization?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah. I think it's at ten o'clock if we have it scheduled. But now, there might not be anything on the Board of Equalization.
But what I'm saying is, we don't want to run into the same situation, and it'll give them two weeks to get your request taken care of.
I'd limit the agenda, but I think that if this is a pressing issue, that I would move that we move this till May 2nd and give the Dan-Docks and Brooklyn Township time enough to work out an agreement and...
If that's your motion, I'll accept that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion from the audience about that?
Would there be any time for us to talk here?
The public discussion will be ended at that time. It'll be amongst the board unless they have questions.
Was that, Paul, is that to be in support or against? To be in support, right?
So the discretion can be made at that time, but it would have to be opened up for both sides to speak.
Could I see a show of hands over there that, people that are in support? Thank you.
I'm going to end with one last comment, that there are two letters that I believe are to be entered into the record as well in support, one being from the Beersford School District, and one from Burt's, forgive me if I misspelled or pronounced that, Sports Bar and Grill, and Beersford as well. Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. I do want to thank everyone. Please come back on the seventh, second.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Toby, we'll take two minutes to regroup, and we'll be back to a Board of Equalization, or to the Board of Equalization. Seventeen, and then adjourn, and go into Board of Equalization right after that, so.
Okay.
So we just made for a really, really long day.
We need a what?
So we just made for a really, really long day.
Yes.
Because we'll be here till 9 o'clock.
Probably. Lunch, we'll need to figure out lunch.
Yeah, we'll be here till 9 o'clock.
Seventeen?
I can't.
Okay, Wendy, we are on a time crunch, so lead us off, please.
Okay, so Taylor with the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks is a conservation officer in Turner and Hutchinson County, and has approached us to see if she.
Excuse me, folks, we do have to conduct this meeting, so please, if you can keep the conversation to outside, that'd be great. Thank you.
So Taylor is the conservation officer for Game Fish and Parks for Turner and Hutchinson County, and a couple of years ago was approached about seeing if they would want to use office space in our building. They did not at that time, so she has reached out to me again to see if they could rent or use an office space at our building. She does have a boat that is for work that she would also be interested in having there. It would be outside during the summer and be in the showroom building in the winter months. I don't know if she's behind me.
Okay.
Ran away, so.
We need to do this now.
Sorry. Wendy, just a minute, I can talk.
We got about two minutes.
All right. Sounds good.
I like schedules. I'm behind already.
No, that's fine. So I'm Conservation Officer Taylor Girdis. I cover Turner and Hutchinson County. I just recently moved to Lenox, South Dakota. So I'm here on behalf of trying to find an office in the Lenox area, and so, do you want me to give you a little spiel?
Let me ask the board, is there any questions concerning this item, or are we ready to move on?
I'm willing to, I'm willing to move on this thing.
Yeah.
Unless you really want to have a big testimony, we're willing to move forward.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? We're moving forward today. Maybe just for the name and record, just we put you on record.
I'm Dan Altman. I'm the supervisor for the district down here.
Well, welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
And given we have no testimony, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, and now I'll ask for a motion to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, or recess, and then we'll go into Board of Equalization.
So moved.
I have a motion. Commissioner Schmidt's giving me a second.
Yes.
Any comments, concerns on that? Sherry, please call the roll.
You're good to go.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, we are now in the Board of Equalization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Take good care of Wendy.
Yes.
Come and talk to us any time.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carter, do we have our first appellant on the phone?
Hello, this is Robert Knoll.
Welcome, Robert. Our Equalization Officer will get us started, and then we'll ask for you to make comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Our first appeal is parcel number 096 dot 49 dot 03 dot 2020, owned by Heartland Tower. It's a 1950 self-supported tower. It's an older tower, but it's still functional. The tower height is 150 feet. We are currently assessing the land at 61,245, and the tower at $60,081. This valuation is being produced on the cost approach to value. It's a very unique property. There are no sales of towers that we could find in or around the Lincoln County area. We do have some towers that are being locally assessed. Most of the towers are centrally assessed if they're Verizon, held by a exempt entity that meets the South Dakota requirements. Here are three towers that are being assessed locally on page two. They as well are being assessed on the cost approach to value. Currently, our assessment on the subject property is $193 per linear foot. The cost comparables are showing ranges between 672 and 1191 per linear foot. The reason why the valuation difference is because this is a 1950s tower.
Thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll ask Robert to give his side of the story.
Go ahead.
Hey, Robert, go ahead.
Hey, thanks so much for being there, and I'm trying to be quick here. Did you all review the letter that I wrote regarding that this is an old microwave tower that was originally owned by AT&amp;T? Did you guys get that letter? And I provided some comps that were as close as I could find, because none were available in Lincoln County. Do you have that letter? I realize your guys' time is limited. I don't know how much time you've had to.
I'm sure we have it. I have not reviewed it myself, so you want to compare this more to some microwave towers?
Right, okay, so I'll give you a quick, I'll talk quick, because I know I've only got 10 minutes here. So we originally bought these, these towers were originally designed by AT&amp;T for microwave telecommunications across the United States for long, for long-distance telephone calls before fiber optics. When they became, and they were, this was done in the 1950s, when they became obsolete because of the fiber optics, AT&amp;T wanted to get rid of them. They didn't want to sell them ones and twosies, so they liquidated all of them. American Tower, which is a large tower corporation, came to them, said, we'll buy these towers. AT&amp;T said, okay, that's fine, but you got to buy all of them. So when American Tower purchased them, they bought a lump sum of all of them, and you'll see probably in the history of this, when the valuation of, when American Tower purchased it from AT&amp;T, they had a de-transfer of $63,000. The way that I was told that that was come about was, American Tower took the value of their billion-dollar, whatever purchase price, million, whatever they did, and they just divided it per the number of towers. Towers like this that are way out in the middle of nowhere, this is out in the middle of a farm field on a very rural area in your most South Dakota, if you know where that is. It's a very small little area. So American Tower kept the ones like in Omaha, Des Moines, and like the one in Des Moines is an office building, so it was worth quite a bit more. So that's how that value. When the American Tower came and went through their list, they said, okay, we've got these sites that are basically of no or negative value to us. We're liquidating them off, and they offered them out for sale. I was made aware of them. I'm really active with emergency preparedness, volunteer amateur radio communications, et cetera. We purchased a site 20 years ago in 2003 for $1,000, which included the land, the building, and tower, everything. We've had, we've had the site again for 20 years. I worked with the county assessor throughout the years, including in 2015 when there was a reevaluation of the site. I've never, of all the sites that we've got, we own 42 of these sites, and this is the only one in South Dakota. We've got some in Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas, and other areas. I've never had one increase this much, and this one will be the one that is valued at the very most, and this is one of the actual leased sites. We've not done anything to the site. The building's original. It's got holes in the stucco, the roof leaks, I mean, the condition of it. The, when we're looking at comparables, and I'm sorry, I'm not a professional at this, I'm kind of, I was kind of limited, because when I tried to research to see if there was other towers, like Corps of Engineer towers, or towers that would be comparable in age, other than the three comps that the county used for that, when I tried to log on to the Beacon, Lincoln County, it said I needed to purchase a subscription to look at sales and other information, which kind of limited me in what I could search for, so I was kind of limited on that. When doing the comparables, the comp one and comp two are more comparable in location for the actual land, and the land value that they calculated per acre there was 2,300, pretty much 2,300, 2,200. I think that is very, very much more fair than to try to, I see the assessors recommending that the valuation of the land for this one acre that we've got out in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of a farm field on the highway, be assessed at 35,000, which I don't have any land anywhere that's assessed at 35,000 an acre, so I think it would be more comparable. I recommend a 3,000, which I'd be okay with on the land, but I see these other, comp one, comp two, or 2,000. Comp three really can't be comparable. It's, it looked like it was just permitted. It didn't look like it's been built yet, and it was actually in an industrial park for a commercial. So on the valuation of the land, that's that. Regarding the tower comps, comp one, there is a 72-year difference between that tower and mine. Comp two, 60-year difference. Comp three, if it's built yet, 72-year difference again for the price of the tower. Lots of times, counties will just have a zero value on the tower, or it's depreciated out because it was built in the 50s. There's currently no use. We've had that since, again, for 20 years, there's been zero commercial interest. The only interest we've had, and actually it was most recently, is from the local amateur radio club in Canton, and there was another club around there. Per FCC federal rules, amateur radio operators cannot do anything for commercial interest, cannot financially gain for anything. That's what we're doing, so we're actually losing money by taking care of the weeds and electric and stuff like that on the tower. Other notable things on the comps that the county provided, on comp one, comp two, comp three, all of them have $0 for the building valuation. So when they're saying my building is, I guess they broke it down, 20,000 for the towers, 31 for the building. I don't know how the comps that they provided, they have $0 on the building, but yet my building, which is an original building from 1950, which is a concrete cinder block with just a stucco over it that has holes in it and the roof leaks, and it's, the old obsolete equipment's still intact inside. I don't think that, again, this is the highest valuation of any of our 42 sites, and the value went up initially in January, 9,500%. February, they reduced a little bit, still went up 8,300, and their current one they're recommending is still a 6,488% increase. We tried to work with the assessor throughout the years on that. I did provide comps in the letter I had from sites that were comparable. They weren't in South Dakota, but they were the best I could do to try to find, to do what I could with diligence that I had. Is there any questions? I'm trying to be as quick, and I apologize for talking so quickly, and I'm a little nervous to be on.
Nope, you're right on task, because you've got about two minutes to wrap this one up. So Commissioner Aaron's, I believe, has a question.
How long has that tower been inactive?
It's been inactive since prior to us owning it 20 years ago. Probably the 1980s is the last time that AT&amp;T used it for their microwave thing, probably '89, maybe 1990, around in that timeframe.
Why don't you just knock it down?
We keep them because we utilize them. Again, I'm really active with amateur radio, volunteer preparedness, and that's where we actually have it. And actually, the cost to quote, knock it down safely is, I mean, would probably cost me $30,000, $40,000 to do it properly, because nothing's cheap anymore, and you can't just go really knock it down.
There is no amateur radio activities going on, though, using that, correct?
I was recently contacted at the first of this year, and they were very interested in them, and I told them that I needed to hold off, because I said I had just been contacted, and the county was raising the tax value on it, and I didn't know what the status of it was going to be, so I didn't want to commit to anything with them. But I've got the Canton Amateur Radio Club, and then there was another club, individuals that are very interested in putting that for weather spotting, and that, utilizing the tower for that. And again, per federal FCC rules, amateur radio communications cannot accept any sort of commercial reimbursement or do anything for profit. It's actually illegal.
Thank you. One question for myself. Do you know, do you operate that site under any conditional use permit from Lincoln County?
No, it's, I think that's grandfathered in from the 1950s. If, I think I'm.
You're not aware of.
Are you talking about?
Thank you.
Yeah, no.
Then, a quick lesson in Lincoln County, since that was plotted prior to 1995, I believe that you have a qualified building eligibility, and a lesson in Lincoln County's economics, those are very valuable. So you may want to consider that, because the best and most valuable use of that land actually may just be in the building eligibility that it retains. So with that, I'll ask the board if there's a motion.
Well, my question first, I got one question for staff.
Yeah, very good.
Chairman, why wasn't that bumped up sooner than the value? Like, why was it, why hasn't it been steadily increasing as opposed to just this year jacking it up 10,000%?
You can see in the assessment history, the valuation was so small, so we were giving 10, 15% adjustments each year, but since the valuation is so minimal, those 10 and 15% increases amounted to very little. Also, just for clarification, the comps one, two, and three are all, have a value for the building. Comps one and two are leased properties, so they don't own the land. We were just showing the egg value. It's not being valued as egg because it's just the structure itself, just the tower.
And to clarify your question, Mr. Aaron's, this was in the reappraisal area for this year, so that's why it saw an enormous jump in one year, because this was the first time that an assessor has been on the property in maybe 30 years.
Very good. I'll ask for a motion.
I don't think that's, the assessor's been, the assessor's been there more than 30 years, because there's recent pictures of it, less than 30 years. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but that comment I don't think was correct.
Thank you for that. I'll end testimony, though.
Thank you.
What's the wishes of the board?
I think it has value. It should have been higher in previous years. I don't know how we got to this. Obviously, the reappraisal did that, but 10,000% increase in value, I mean, is obviously very shocking. The real question, though, is not how much the increase was, it's how close, or what is the fair market value of the property?
Correct.
So I don't think the fair market value of the property, though, is what somebody would pay to build a house on it right now, because if that was the case, they'd have to knock down the tower at cost to them. So I don't think you're going to get 139,000 out of it.
I'm looking for a number.
Mr. Chairman, my motion is, we value the land at $16,000, and we value the building at $30,000.
All right, there's, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments on that? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. I greatly appreciate what you do.
Next up, very good, Carl.
Our next appeal is parcel number 099 dot 51 dot 28 dot C100. It's owned by Gerald Barr. It is 24.46 acres. This is a direct-to-county appeal. We currently have concrete paving being valued at 16,563, as it's a parking lot, and the value of the land is currently being valued at 155,570, or 15 cents per square foot. We're recommending no change. The subject is still well below the comparable sales and comparable assessments that have any form of flood plain risk. On page two, you can see some comparables that we have for properties that have a flood risk or some type of pounding on the property. Comp one sold for $123,000. It sits on 2.08 acres, most notably is comp three, although this was a later comp, but it did show some information in regards to properties that are being sold with flood risk. This was not used in our analysis for the 2023 values. The third page shows assessments of properties that are sitting on flood risk. Page four is our overall three approaches to value. The subject property is being valued at 15 cents per square foot. Our cost comparables are between 57 cents and $2.25. Our market is indicating a market range between 64 cents and $1.36 per square foot. The map shows where the subject property is located, just north of Lenox, and then where our comparables are located. Those are our sale comparables. and then where our comparables are located. Those are our sale comparables. And then our assessment comparables are on the last page. With that, assessors are recommending no change, and we'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Are any of the comps currently tillable land, used for crops?
I can answer that. No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Barr. Name and address would be appreciated.
Home address?
Any address you give us.
Eight thirteen East Silver Lake Pond, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five-seven-one-zero-eight.
Good morning.
Morning.
What would you like us to know?
Well, I was just here last year, and we got it agreed to that it was fifty thousand dollars. Here's the deal. It's unusable land. There's a creek going through it. It's been a drought the last couple of years, but you can see what it looks like. I, I mean, I'm just, there's no access to it. I've tried to give the land away. I mean, I'll take fifty grand, I'll take twenty-five grand right now. You can have it. Give me a hundred and seventy-two. I mean, I won the lottery. But, I mean, yes, I have a small piece of concrete on that land. Everything else is useless, literally. There's, you can't get to the other side of it. When the water comes up, it comes up all the way to where we park our vehicles. I mean, it, you know what? You guys are doing a great job of giving the land values up, but let's be realistic here. I don't want to have to come back here and take up you guys' time every year, but I just wanted to be fair.
Very good. Anything else? Any questions for Mr. Barr? Any questions for staff?
I got a proposal.
You have a proposal. I'm, I'm listening.
I think that the, the AV concrete parking lot, sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three is adequate, but I think the land should be marked down to about fifteen hundred dollars an acre. And if my memory or my master's me correct, I'm right at about forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three or fifty thousand dollars in change.
Second.
So you wanted it?
I'm not quite sure what his motion was. Second.
I am.
What is the actual motion?
The actual motion is to accept, as I said before, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To accept the AV parking lot at sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, and to take the remaining portion and put that at fifteen hundred dollars an acre, which will reduce this down to probably around forty-nine five sixty-three or fifty thousand dollars in change.
So you want it forty-nine five sixty-three or fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand. Put it at fifty thousand. Make it round numbers.
I will accept that motion.
Is that just for the land, or is that total value?
That's total.
And would you like the land to stay, or the?
Well, I'm, I'm putting the land at fifteen hundred bucks an acre.
So the concrete?
What Mr. Barr says, it is absolutely worthless.
All right. Would you accept that the motion is fifty thousand, the concrete will stay this, as the Department of Equalization have been making the adjustment on the lands?
Second.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
I'll look for a call on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great day, Mr. Barr.
And ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Appreciate it.
See you next year.
All right. Now, the ten-twenty. We're still eleven minutes behind, unfortunately?
Oh, yeah.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
Okay.
We have a G and K Supreme Auto. Are they on the phone?
This is in person.
In person.
Our next appeal is parcel number zero-nine-eight dot four-nine dot sixteen dot E zero E A. It's owned by G and K Supreme Auto Sales. It's located at two-eight-one-eight-nine four-hundred-and-seventy-ninth Avenue in Canton. It consists of storage units. It's, there's seven buildings total. We have approximately a hundred and twenty-eight units. The structures are currently being assessed at eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand two fifty-six. The lot is being assessed at a hundred and thirteen thousand two fifty-six. Our recommendation is to leave the value the same. This did go to local board, and the local board lowered the total valuation to eight-hundred-and-thirteen thousand two fifty-six. The complaint is in the increase in the assessments, in the lack of discretionary formula on some of the newer buildings. You can see our sales that we have of storage units. Our assessments are, are really low. They're usually about fifty percent lower than what they could sell for. Comp One sold for one point two million dollars in August of twenty-two. We had an assessed value of six hundred and twenty-eight, and that was here in Lincoln County. Comp Two sold for four million. We had it assessed at one point three. That also occurred in Lincoln County. Comps Three and Four are assessment equity comparables, showing how our storage units are being equally assessed. Currently, our compare, our subject property is being assessed at twenty-eight dollars per square foot, an average of about eleven percent depreciation. There are multiple buildings on the site built at different years. Our sales approach is indicating a sales between forty-six and ninety-eight dollars a square foot. The average depreciation on our sales is thirty-three, so our subject property is quite newer. Our cost comparables are showing a cost range between fifteen and thirty-five dollars per square foot. The average depreciation is twenty-three. Our next slide shows where our subject property is located, just north of Canton, and then also where our comparables are located. This just gives you a breakdown of what type of buildings are on the facility in the last slide. Currently, there are some incomplete structures.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Is the appellant applicant here at all? Can we open the doors just to make sure people realize they can come back in? Thank you. We're, we have the ten-twenty G and K Auto. Anybody here? Okay.
I think Dave went to do a loop.
Yeah.
So you've heard the staff. Doesn't look like anybody's here to represent it. Is there a motion?
Was there a right reason the, the other board adjusted that? Would they give a logic reason as to why?
Are you with G and K?
Yes.
Please come up.
Yes.
Your name and address. Thank you.
He's been here a while.
Yeah.
We were just on break for waiting.
No, we're moving forward.
Geez, you're really running late. So, yes, I'm Kenny at G and K Storage.
Yep. Just tell us what you would like us to know. If you have comparable property that's, has a different valuation or something like that?
Some of that, but yes, started with the township board meetings, trying to evaluate. Is it based off of our building permits as we get them? You might, with storage units, I've been building one about every couple of years, so obviously it goes up in value. But my biggest thing would be, for the calendar year of twenty-two, I had applied for a building permit and never even started the project, so that might be a little hindering if you base property taxes off of building permits.
Have you had a chance to visit with the department to ask those questions?
Yes.
And what were your?
Department of.
Equalization.
Yes.
Okay. And did they indicate that the values were based on that at all?
No, they had me to sign a small statement of what I feel.
Okay.
The reason for my.
Well, let's ask that question. Were any of the valuations that we have today based on a building permit that was never utilized? If you're going to speak, you're going to have to come up to the mic.
I believe you can see the, what we have there. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are going to show that we were there on October sixth of twenty-twenty-two, and at that time, one, the one was complete, and the other one was just a slab.
And you only.
We consider that a foundation, and we would value that at about ten percent of the overall building value.
Very good. Thank you. That answers, I think, the question.
That's perfect picture there.
Awesome. So that answers that question. And then, do you have any comps to say that yours is valued more than a comparable piece of property?
Honestly, no, we have. How do you determine the other person's property taxes without asking them?
Well, it's all public record, actually. The, it's all, the, the valuations are all public record. So you would look at a property that's similar age, similar size, similar location, and see what their valuation is, is in comparison to yours?
And we actually, I did have a little help with that then, the night of our township board meeting.
Okay. What is that evidence?
Seats and Box, that, the Canton Township. And they did pull some, say comps, but I don't have those documentations with me.
Okay.
So we were trying to determine, yeah, so unfortunately, that's the argument I can't stand by.
Okay, sure. Yeah, because we, we don't have that unless you're bringing that with you today.
Okay.
I don't know what this township looked at.
Yeah, we, we would have no idea.
All I have is just one letter from them, you know, correspondence back from Peggy Vankey.
That was their decision.
Just the decision?
Yes.
But it doesn't give the, the evidence for it?
Apparently not.
Sorry about that. Board, any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
Did you see our information? Did you go online and look?
No.
Okay.
All I brought was just the last few years of, you know, your tax.
But yeah, in the future, all that valuations, that's public record. So the ideal would be is to find similar properties, you know, in age, size, building material, location, and then compare how that property is, because this is a board of equalization, to make sure that your property's equalized in value to another property of similar size and shape and condition.
How close of a region, you know, Canton only, because do we get compared to Sioux Falls, Harrisburg?
You would, there would be adjustments for location. Your best bet is property that is in close proximity.
That's what I would feel it would be.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think probably there's a little surprise on the part of the property taxpayer here, because he's not getting the discretionary from the city of Canton anymore, you know? And basically, I think, what is it under state law? You can go five years, but the, is it the municipality can, has the discretion to change that if they want to? I think the city of Canton is kind of reining it in, because they want more property taxes, and they've ended that now. So basically, the whole theory behind it is to get you up on your, off the training wheels the first few years you're in business, and then after that, they expect you to get going with paying it like everybody else does. I know it stings. I know it stings.
Is there a motion?
I'll just move to sustain the assessor's.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Carla, the ten-thirty. Is that individual? Thank you. If you have any other questions, either contact the staff or contact one of us.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For disclosure, I will have to recluse, so we will not have a board for the ten-thirty. I have a conflict, so I'll announce that. So that gentleman will have to get rescheduled, or that one will have to get rescheduled.
Even though they have accepted the assessor's recommendation, there's no hearing, essentially?
Well, he can't vote on it.
I can't vote on it.
He can't vote on it.
I can't vote on it.
Okay.
You just delay it.
You can't vote on Poet.
Delay it.
I can't vote.
Yeah, so, so we'll have to delay that, unless you can take an administrative adjustment somehow.
You want me to vote on it?
Sure.
Well, are they on the line? They're on the line.
They're going to give their testimony if they would like to.
But I've.
Look, look.
Yeah, I, you have two members that can't vote on it.
I've got, I've got, I've got shares.
Lead it, Mr. Aaron?
I would say, I would, I'd say we just have to postpone it.
You gotta, you gotta postpone it. You gotta have a quorum in order to hear it.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that you will get three votes, because I'm sure Commissioner Gibbon has shares, you have shares, and I have shares.
So you'll have to visit with counsel and see if you can make an administrative adjustment.
Okay.
But we definitely cannot act on it today. All right. So we're going to move on.
Sorry about that. Do you want to tell them on the line?
Yes. Put them on. Who do we have?
Hi, can you, can you hear me? Hi, this is Derek Curtin with Ryan, representing Poet.
Well, hey, I, I wanted to inform you, unfortunately, because of conflict, we cannot take your item today. Staff will be working with you and counsel and seeing if we can get this rectified without an official action by the board. I do appreciation, appreciate your, my understanding, accepting the staff's new recommendation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So with that, I, I would hope that we can find a resolution and/or have a, we're working with a short board today, and there's two of the three members that have conflict today, so.
Okay, yeah, no, completely understand. And I guess from Poet's perspective, we were appreciative from, or, we're appreciative of working with the assessor's office, and we are in agreement with their recommendation. So.
Very good.
Whatever administrative, administrative action needs to be taking place in the future, we can certainly get it done.
Awesome. Thank you very much, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Moving on to the ten-forty, Sun Enterprises.
Hy-Vee.
It's Hy-Vee on Fifty-seventh and Cliff, isn't it?
Is that person, no. No one here? Will they be on the phone? Yes, they'll be on the phone.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that person on the phone? We are good to go.
Our next appeal is parcel number two-eight-zero dot one-nine dot zero-zero dot zero-zero-one-C. It's owned by Sun Enterprises. It's located at one-two-three-one East Fifty-seventh Street in Sioux Falls. It is a grocery, pharmacy, UPS, coffee, and grill. It sits on approximately, the, the square footage of the building is forty-four thousand nine fifty-six, built in two thousand six. The C store is approximately two thousand two hundred and thirty-six, two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Currently, the assessment on the structure is three million seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine seventy. The C store is being valued at two hundred and ten thousand five forty. The lot is being valued at one million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand six eighty-five for a total valuation of five million seven hundred and forty-eight thousand one ninety-five. You can see is the, the assessment history on the property. This property did go to the Office of Hearing Examiners, in which a complete narrative appraisal was prepared, at which time, on the day of the hearing, the appellant backed out, was a great presentation on our narrative.
Excuse me. Could you explain backed out? He withdrew, withdrew?
He withdrew the appeal.
Withdrawed, thank you.
On the very same day of the hearing.
For which year? I'm sorry.
Our, page two will show you assessment his, history on our grocery stores. Page three shows some sales of grocery stores, all of which happened in Lincoln County. Currently, the assessment on the retail store is eighty-five dollars per square foot. The convenience store is ninety-four dollars a square foot. Our cost is showing a cost range between eight, eighty dollars and ninety-eight dollars a square foot. Our market is indicating a market range between one ninety-one and two thirty-four a square foot. The map shows where the subject property is located, right up here in the northeast corner of the map, and where our comparables are located. With that, assessors are recommending no change to the value. With that, staff will stand by for questions.
Any questions for staff? Who do we have on the phone?
Yes.
This is Gabe Knoller.
Good morning, Gabe. If you would, give an address as well, please.
One-four-three-six-zero West Ninety-Six Terrace.
Thank you. What would you like us to know?
Well, I, clarification. We withdrew the appeal for which year?
Last year.
For twenty-twenty-two?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to confirm that, because on our end, it shows that it's
I just wanted to confirm that, because on our end, it shows that it's still pending. Um, just to say.
Okay.
Um, let me see. The date filed was May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
If we could, we gotta focus on this year's appeal, so.
Well, and that, it won't take very long. I just wanted to, because I don't show that, I just, I'll have to look into that further as far as the.
I think our staff can work with you and get you the documentation concerning that.
Yeah.
Okay.
What would you like to know us for this year?
Well, second of all, I'd like to know if I can have access to the, um, comps that the county relied on.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so after the hearing, if I could review those, that would be great. Um, the taxpayer is asking for a value of eighty-one dollars a square foot on the, uh, grocery store. And on the C store, I, I think we actually have more on it than what the county's, um, allocating. We're showing a value of eight hundred and fourteen thousand for the C store, or three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
Well, unfortunately, we can't raise your value if you are requesting it.
Well, no, I'm not asking, that's a combined value, because it's all one parcel. If you combine them, we're at a value of four million four hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred.
Yes, do you have any, uh, comps that, or comparables, uh, that would be, uh, as similar as possible to this, that would show that we have your property, uh, valued, um, over that one?
Well, I don't have anything in addition to what was sent with our appeal.
Yeah, I'm, sir, I'm looking at your comps that you have in your appellant documents here, and if I understand correctly, you want us to use convenience stores and, and locations in Winter, Redfield, Vermilion, and Sisseton, and Madison. Um, I just don't find those comps to be comparable, given the fact that, uh, I don't find them to be persuasive. Now, I do see one of the comps here is, um.
There's one in Sioux Falls.
In Harrisburg, and one in, I see the one in Harrisburg, on Cliff Avenue. And that gives you a valuation of, you know, your, your land square foot is fifteen dollars and change, a square foot. And then I think you got one in Sioux Falls that gives, uh, square footage of, uh, twenty-one dollars and change, right?
Um, I'm not sure how you're determining that, I mean, uh.
For the land, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I don't have the land right now.
I'm just reading, I'm just reading your document that you provided to us.
Okay, well, I don't show a breakdown for, we don't typically break out the land.
Okay.
Well, that's what your document says.
Just to try to expedite this, what, what we need is evidence that, that clearly indicates that if we've assessed your property, and to do that, we would need comparable property in size, location, age, look, um, and, and general, uh, build consideration, to, to show us that it's either, uh, assessed, uh, too high, too low, or appropriate. Our, our staff is indicating that it's assessed appropriately, so we're really looking to hear from you, something that says, uh, look at this property, which is, um, you know, half a mile away from it, that's approximately the same size, approximately the same year, uh, same condition, uh, that kind of same, uh, use, to say, yes, we're, based on that property, we are assessed inappropriately, but would you have any evidence to that, sir?
Uh, not, other than what I've already submitted, no.
All right, well, I do want to thank you for your testimony. Uh, is there any other questions?
No, I got a motion.
I got a motion, too.
Move to sustain the assessor's office recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. I do want to thank your time. If you have other questions, either reach out to Department of Equalization, or you can contact myself, I'm sure one of the other Board members as well. Thank you.
Now, uh, I'm sorry, one question, who do I reach out to get the, uh?
It's all online.
The county's evidence that they submitted?
You can get it online, otherwise, contact the Board of Equalization, and they'll help you walk through that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Um, I believe we're at the ten fifty, South Point.
It's a very familiar, uh.
Yeah, property.
Property.
Yeah, we, every year.
Uh, do we, is this person on the phone? We are good to go, thank you.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot two four dot thirteen dot zero zero one. It's owned by South Point LTD, located at six thousand three South Cliff Avenue in Sioux Falls. It is a multifamily unit with a hundred and forty-four units, built in nineteen ninety-three. We are currently assessing the land at one million eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-six, excuse me, one million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. The structure is being valued at nine million four hundred and ninety-one thousand eight oh five. Um, after reviewing the current data, the income approach was not used, but all, but it was, um, it was considered, thank you. The current assessment is on the cost approach and reflects other like properties, as well as the sales market. Um, we're recommending no change. Again, all three approaches were considered. The cost approach is coming at our current value of eleven million three hundred and eighty-five thousand four sixty-five. The income approach was indicating a valuation of twelve million six hundred and eighty-five thousand three thirty, so that came in higher. Um, we show some comparables. Well, he, on page four is the income approach evaluation. Our cost approach comps are located on page five, where we're showing that our assessments are equally assessed. Our sales approaches are on the next page. Uh, the sales approach, um, they're fairly recent sales, uh, from ni- two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. Finding multifamily comps is quite, uh, it's quite difficult sometimes, although we did have some sales that we felt were comparable. Currently, our subject is being valued at fifty-six dollars per square foot, or seventy-nine thousand sixty-six dollars per unit. Our sales is indicating a sales range between sixty-four and one oh seven per square foot, so our subject property is well below our sales comparison. Our sales units per unit cost is eighty-seven dollars, and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars to one hundred and twenty-one, seven ninety-five. Our cost is indicating a cost range between fifty-nine and sixty-six dollars per square foot, or seventy-seven thousand three eighty-eight to eighty-six thousand zero one eight per unit. So again, our subject property is well below, uh, the cost comparables. With that, the assessors are recommending no change to the twenty twenty-three value, and will stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
So when you use the income approach, uh, that actually came in higher than what you're purpo- proposing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Uh, who do we have on the phone, please?
Darrell Smith.
Hey, Darrell, do you, can you give us an address, please, for the record?
I have an address of six thousand one South Cliff Avenue.
Very good. What would you like us to know, sir?
Uh, I disagree with the assessors just a little bit on the value. I ran my income approach using my actual, I'm a subject property, and it's coming in at a value of, say, about one second, of about ten point seven three million, or about seventy-four thousand five fourteen a door. Uh, we talked informally about this, back and forth a few times, we couldn't come to any agreement. Uh, I ran an equity approach, we couldn't agree on those. I was just gonna ask for a slight reduction down to ten million seven forty, ten million seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, any other evidence that you do want to present?
No, sir.
All right, you've heard the testimony from staff and the appellant. Uh, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a motion.
Well, I'll accept a motion.
Move to sustain the, uh, assessor's office recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, sustain the recommendation from the Department of Equalization. Any comments concerning that?
Yep.
Uh, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Um, if you'll stay on the line, or do you have the next property as well?
Uh, five one zero one South Marion Road.
Yes, if you'll just hold, uh, wait for a second, uh, the department will give their presentation, and I'll ask for your comments on that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eighty dot eight two dot zero zero dot one hundred, owned by Lexington Estates. It's located at five one zero one South Marion Road in Sioux Falls. It is a multifamily unit with a hundred and forty-four units, built in two thousand one. Our current assessment is the land is being valued at one million one hundred and four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The structure value is eleven million two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. After rev- after reviewing the current data, the income approach was not used, although considered. Current assessment is on the cost approach and reflects other like properties, as well as the sales and market. We're recommending no change to the current assessment.
Any further testimony?
Um, I was just gonna show our income approach is indicating a valuation of thirteen million two hundred and eighty-three thousand six twenty-eight. The cost approach is, is lower than the income approach.
Okay. Any question?
The same, yep.
Any questions for staff?
No.
No.
Uh, uh, I'll turn it back over to you, sir. Anything you'd like to share concerning this property?
Uh, as, just like the previous one, I ran our income, using the county's cap rate, our actuals, and the value came down to be eleven point one eight million.
And, just curiosity, sir, had you shared with the department those numbers before?
Yes.
All right, very good. Any questions for this gentleman?
None.
No.
Is there a motion?
Move to sustain the assessor's recommendation.
You gotta get a little quicker over here. I'll take a second for you, though.
I'll take a second on that one.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns on the motion? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. I do want to thank you ti- for your time to participate in the process. If you have further questions, contact the department or one of the commissioners. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are these people coming in, or is this by phone as well?
This is by phone, the next three. They're the Holiday Gas Stations.
Are they all? I would ask for a three-minute break, if we could, and then you make a phone call.
So moved.
Thank you.
I guess Sam which is coming in, too.
Yeah, second.
All right, we'll take a three-minute break.
Okay. Could they turn the heat up in here?
Appellant, uh, um, on the phone, not yet. Can we see if we can reach them?
They got three of them here.
Yep.
I'm gonna turn my mic on, sorry. Adam, monitor.
She did RSVP.
Yep, we're trying. We have no luck reaching her. We will proceed, and if she joins us while we're on, we'll bring her in.
Our next, our next appeal is parcel number two eighty dot two seven dot zero zero dot zero zero one A. It's owned by Holiday Station Stores LLC, located at nineteen twenty-seven West Fifty-seventh Street in Sioux Falls. It is a gas station or convenience store, built in nineteen ninety-eight. It has approximately five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight square feet with a car wash. The current assessment for the land is three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the structure is being valued at eight hundred and forty-seven thousand six thirty-three, for the, for a total valuation of one million one hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, our assessor's recommendation is no change, change, the subject is well below the comparable market, and is well within the cost approach to values. Sales are about fifty percent more than what our assessments are showing, um. I was just gonna lead into that all three of these Holiday's gas stations are equally assessed. Our page three shows some sales for gas stations. The first sale was in November of twenty twenty for one point nine million dollars. That was located in Lincoln County. Our next two sales were, were Mini Haha County sales. We just wanted to show these as, uh, the market for gas stations. They weren't considered when putting our twenty twenty-three assessments together. Our assessment for our subject property is a hundred and forty-nine dollars per square foot. The cost approach, which was the first comparable, is, excuse me, our cost is showing a cost valuation between a hundred and sixteen dollars and a hundred and fifty-four dollars per square foot, and the market is indicating a market range between three hundred and forty-eight dollars and four hundred and eighty-three dollars per square foot. You can see where our subject property is located, just on Fifty-seventh Street, our comparable. One is located in Harrisburg, our comparables two and three are located in Mini Haha County. I do want to make recommendation of no change, and our certificate of real estate value showed no property of, personal property was indicated on the certificate of real estate value. So we felt the, although the sale price in twenty twenty for this Holiday Station was two point nine million dollars, but it was not on the open market, did not consider any personal properties within that, in that, uh, value. It was concerning to hear this appellant during the local board's testimony. She felt she was getting no customer service from the Equalization Office. As soon as I had heard that testimony from the appellant, I had one of my appraisers, or both of my appraisers, reach out to the appellant, just to answer any questions, or give her any kind of documents, um, that she felt she wasn't getting, um, during the local portion of the appeal, um, at that, after that appea- or, excuse me, after that, uh, correspondence was sent out, we've had zero correspondence with her. So we did try to reach out to her, um, after the local board.
Any questions, staff?
I'll ask one last time, if, if we have anybody on the line, or anybody in the offi- audience that wishes to testify in this. Hearing none or seeing none, I'd ask for a motion?
Uh, because the appellant did not show up and can't explain to us what, what their rationale is, I would move to sustain the assessor's recommendation.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns concerning?
Is that, Madam, Mr. Chair, is that for all three, or just one?
No, we can only act on the.
One at a time, okay?
One at a time.
All right.
Uh, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would also move for, do we have to go through the whole?
We have to wait until eleven twenty, unfortunately, 'cause of the scheduled hearing.
All right.
So we'll be on recess for five minutes.
Okay.
One dot zero zero two A. It's owned by Holiday Station Stores LLC, located at seventy-four fourteen South Minnesota Avenue in Sioux Falls. It is a gas station with a car wash, built in two thousand seventeen. The building has approximately eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six square feet. Currently, our assessed value for the land is one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Our structure is valued at one million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand sixty-six dollars. The recommendation from the assessor's office is no change. The subject is well below the comparable market value, and is within the cost approach to value. With that, staff and I will stand by for questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I'd vote to.
Oh, just a second. Uh, is there anybody on the line? We have no one on the line. Is there anybody in the audience to testify? Hearing none or seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
To deny the appeal and uphold the, uh.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Call a question.
Thank you, Sherry.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, with that, I'll ask for a motion to recess the Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Move to recess.
I got a second, or I got a motion, I got a second. Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess, and go back into Board of Commission. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Carla, can we handle numbers ten through fourteen? There are abatements, please.
She doesn't have them either.
Those are Sherry's.
Oh, those are yours, okay.
So I've got a abatement request on a parcel that is within the city of Sioux Falls for nineteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. It's for a veteran's exemption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a board, uh, approve a abatement for taxes in Springdale Township. Three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. It is for, it was purchased by the city of Sioux Falls.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments from the audience? Thank you, Sherry.
Erns.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
I have a board, uh, uh, abatement application for a parcel in Springdale Township. It was also purchased by the city of Sioux Falls for thirteen eighty-four eighty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Call the roll.
Poppins.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, abatement for a parcel in Springdale Township, also purchased by the city of Sioux Falls for twenty-one eighty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Call the question.
Erns.
Yes.
Schmidt, Poppins.
Yes.
And abatement for seven hundred and sixty-one for a parcel in Springdale Township purchased by the city of Sioux Falls.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Call the question.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes. But that, we still have time, Madam Auditor, if you would like to handle number
I need to submit, set an appraisal committee for the surplus items for the highway department. I am gonna have Terry Floyd do it, Jared Narum, and then I need one commissioner.
Is anyone here volunteering? Otherwise, I'll volunteer. Okay, I'd ask for a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Do we need to do any of these others?
We still have seven minutes.
So we can do Terry's. Um, he just wants to approve the purchase of the, of the Yankton bid. He's got all the information online.
What, for the record, what was it?
Um, I, the one thing. Bear with me, I'll get to the agenda.
Uh, could, that's number nine.
Yeah.
Right? Nope, that's
No, uh, Terry, Terry is number seven.
So for number
We can scroll back into that screen here.
Okay, it is four. Crack sealant and mastic sealant.
Okay.
And he's got the minutes and the affidavit in there too.
Yeah, he's got everything for the bid.
Finally pulled it up too. Any questions for?
No.
Alright, I'd ask for a motion then.
So move, uh, move to accept the bid as, uh, requested.
Second, the motion.
Second, is any comments, questions, concerns for any audience or staff?
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
So now you just have Rambo on the other.
Do you wish for Tracy to speak on your item?
I mean, I don't need her to. If you, if you guys are okay with it, then
I think if you just give your explanation on the record here, we'll
So what it, what happened is I'm down to two employees. I am going, I'm in the process of interviewing two now. What I wanna do is I wanna give the kids or the folks in my office a ten percent increase, temporary increase, from the time the folks are hired for four weeks afterwards. I'm hoping that within the next week, I should have the positions filled. So it would be approximately the end of May, beginning of June, that they'd get it.
Uh, you've heard the explanation. Is there any questions concerning it? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the request with the limitations presented. Any questions, concerns from the audience? Hearing none, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Then I think we've got everything done, right?
Is Joe Mater available?
Did we approve the recommended, uh, resignation?
Yeah, that's in the consent.
That's in consent, yep.
Right.
One is gone.
We got that.
Two is gone.
We got.
Wendy's got her report.
Wendy's, uh, was just requesting if you guys wanted to just read through the report and then contact her if you have any questions.
I'll accept that explanation. Very good. So number six is completed.
Okay. So we just have Joe Mater left and, uh, John Rambo.
I just sent Joe an email.
I can brief you a little bit on this, so we're in the process of, uh, awarding a bid for the north half of the apron in front of the FBO building and, um, uh, the bids actually came in under, uh, original estimates. The little bid is from an, a company, uh, from T, uh, the T area.
That's good.
And, um, I think we were pleased with that. And then the other items that he had was, I think, all related to that.
And you do, in the, in the agenda, under the requested item, it shows all the bid information and what the actual resolution would be.
Was X significantly under?
So we need to still do that?
Pleasantly under, yeah, absolutely.
Do we wanna go back into?
Yeah, i- if he didn't reach him, let's go back into, I'd ask for a motion, go back into board.
So moved, second.
A motion and second. Sherry, please.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes. Yep, we're now back in the Hey Carla.
The mode.
Refresh us. We are now at the eleven thirty?
Eleven twenty-five.
Oh, sorry, eleven twenty-five.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot seven six dot zero four dot zero zero two A. It's owned by Holiday Station Stores LLC located at sixty-five oh nine South Louise Ave- Avenue in Sioux Falls. It is a convenience store gas station built in two thousand and thirteen. Has approximately seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen square feet with a car wash. Our current assessment, uh, for the structure is one million, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. The land is being assessed at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, six thirty-one. For a total valuation of two million, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. We're recommending no change. The subject is well below the comparable market value and is within the cost approach to value. With that, staff and I will stand by for questions.
Thank you for your, uh, information. Is there any questions for staff? Although I was asked for a motion, or, uh, is there anybody on the line or in the audience that would like to speak? We have nobody on the line. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, ask for a motion.
Move to deny the appeal, sustain assessor's recommendation.
A motion and second, Sherry.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. Very good, we have an eleven thirty.
You're ahead of schedule.
By a second. Wilson Trailers, is there anybody here to represent them or are they on the line? We have someone on the line. So ahead, go ahead and proceed.
Our next appeal is parcel number two fifty dot fifteen dot zero zero dot C one hundred. It is located at four fifteen East Oriole in Lenox, South Dakota. It's heavy manufacturing, built, um, at various times between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven. It's approximately one thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine square feet with the thirty-foot sidewalls. Our current assessment on the structure that went out with the assessment notice is twelve million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-five dollars or seventy-seven dollars per square foot. The lot is being assessed at two hundred and thirteen thousand, thirty-two dollars or twenty cents per square foot. We do have a recommendation, um, after the review of the property. Our recommendation is to lower the structure value to eleven million, one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight. We did apply a ten percent overbuilt adjustment. Um, this was deemed necessary by the appraiser after review. It's something we're gonna consider going forward on some of these larger building, manufacturing buildings. On page three, you can see some comparable sales. Now, these sales are older. It's very difficult to find, uh, heavy ma- manufacturing type sales that occur in Lincoln County. Our third comparable is more for assessment equity. It's Showplace in Harrisburg. We do have a fourth assessment equity showing, uh, a property in Minnehaha County that's being assessed at ninety dollars per square foot. It was not considered in our assessments. Just wanted to show you for preview, um, and for assessment history, uh, equity on these types of properties. Currently, our valuation or the recommended new value for our subject property is at sixty-nine dollars per square foot. The comparable cost range is between eighty-three and one oh five per square foot. So it's low in our range, the subject property is. The market is indicating a market range between eighty-five dollars and ninety-six dollars per square foot. With that, uh, staff will stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
With that, uh,
If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Derek Gerton with Ryan LLC. Address is one twenty North Washington, Lansing, Michigan. I'm the tax agent for Wilson Trailer Company.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, first off, I obviously appreciate the board's time and opportunity to present our case. I also appreciate the assessor's time and the work we've done prior. As I said, you know, we've went through some conversations and, um, while we appreciate the assessor's reduction or lower recommendation, we still think the value should be lower. Um, a little bit of history on the assessment. Um, as you can see in the assessor's assessment history, the previous value stood until two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, the original assessment on the property was ten million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Um, obviously, that was a significant increase from the two thousand and twenty-one value. Uh, Wilson Trailer chose to appeal the property at that time. And through working with Carla and the staff in the equalization office, we were able to agree to a value at the OAG of nine point eight million. Um, and while Wilson Trailer thought maybe that was still above some of the comparables that will present, it was a fair and equitable resolution to the appeal, so they were willing to accept. Um, and then obviously, fast forwarding to two thousand and twenty-three, um, we saw another very significant increase. And that is why we are here today. Um, I guess, as the assessor stated, you know, finding comparable sales in Lincoln County for a manufacturing property of this size is relatively difficult. Um, and it's really more of a reg- regional type property. Um, so we've pulled and provided some ass- or sales comparables. I believe it should be attached in your packet of industrial properties kinda throughout a two-hundred-mile radius. Um, 'cause that's really what you have to search in order to find any industrial manufacturing of this size. And as you can see on our list, the majority of the sales comparables that we feel kind of near the Lenox plant are all in the forty-eight to fifty-four dollar range. Which would be below the current proposed assessment. Um, with that, we would ask the board to reduce the value to nine million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred. And basically, that number reflects our settled value last year. Plus, there is a small discretionary assessment that was added this year, so that would be added to the number. Um, again, you know, we feel that the sales comparables we provided kind of tell the story here. Um, and certainly hope that the board will consider them. And happy to ask any questions.
Uh, I do have a question, sir. So have you seen the assessor's offices provided comparables?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, you know, those are all located here in South Dakota in this Lenox area. Why are those, you know, why shouldn't I consider them? Why are they not persuasive? And why should I take yours, which none of them are in South Dakota? Uh, they're in Iowa and Minnesota. I understand the argument of regionality, I get that part. But can you zero in and tell me why these comparables from T, T, Harrisburg, and Sioux Falls shouldn't be relied upon?
Sure. Um, I, I guess first off, you know, obviously, assessment comparables aren't really representative of what the market value is. They're, they're simply a comparison of assessment. So I can't particularly say whether or not the assessed values on those properties are reflective of market. Um, I can tell you, these two sales were actually presented last year. Um, and I discussed them with the assessor's office at that time. And I can, the, the property in T, I believe the assessor's actually missing a parcel. Um, and I would ask for some clarification from the staff on that. But I believe you can actually see in the picture, the parcel they're showing in their comparable, the front parcel in front of it, which has a building on it, was also part of that sale. So, um, at least in our research and discussion last year, that drastically changed the value per square foot. Um, and I guess, you know, I would ask for clarification from the staff, but I know we had discussed some of those issues with that very sales comp last year.
Well, yeah, you can see why I'm interested in this, because the two sales that are listed as comparables in T and T are in that eighty-five and ninety-six range. And then I think in your comparables, you, you know, you have nothing in that neighborhood, which, you know, I understand for the purposes of making your argument. But, um, I guess I would ask the staff to just clarify that comment where he's saying the comparable isn't accurately, you know, accounted for.
Description.
Yeah.
For clarification, you know, I did visit with Mr., um, Gritten last year in regards to some of his concerns on the, the two parcel. They are combined, they are one parcel, and it was just a bare lot. So, I mean, it would not affect the building structure, price per square foot. I do wanna present after, um, the appellant gave some information in regards to some of his comparables, staff went through. There are many, many errors on his comparables. Some of them, the wrong square footage. We obtained this information by either calling the county in which he, uh, is referring to on his spreadsheet, or we're going to their beacon site. Um, you know, they have the wrong square footage for the buildings, for the structures. Some of the properties that he's using, they're not on the open market. Some of them didn't even have sale prices with them. They were leased back type situations. So, I mean, we have a series of information in regards to every single one of his, uh, his sales or comparables that he's using on his spreadsheet. If you want me to go through line by one, line, I can.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. That information should have been provided ahead of time by, by the appellant.
Uh, any other questions for the appellant or?
Nope.
I have one question for staff, if I may.
Um, Carla, there's reference to an agreement last year for nine point eight million. Was that under, uh, understanding that this was going to be reviewed in a year? Or was that a, a back and forth, we got to what we felt the appropriate value was at that time?
That was the appropriate value for the two thousand and twenty-two value. One of the biggest things that, um, took place on everybody's valuation for two thousand and twenty-three as we, um, up- updated our cost approach valuations be, just because of, you know, the cost of materials and, and labor increase. So we increased that by, um, I believe, ten percent, um, countywide. So, an evaluation or an appeal is only good for one year. So we reevaluate those values.
Just wanted to see if there was any other lying agreements within that. Is there, is that your understanding as well, sir?
Uh, yeah, so it, it was a, um, obviously, a settlement just impacting the two thousand and twenty-two year. Um, I guess the one thing quickly that I'd like to add, um, and sort of the difficulty of relying on the cost approach. And that obviously is the biggest reason for this significant increase from last year. Um, obviously, we've experienced an extreme increase in inflation and cost of construction. Um, and the one thing I would kind of caution the board is that despite the cost of construction going up, that doesn't necessarily mean the market value of a property is going to increase that much year over year. Um, you know, certainly, especially with large industrial buildings, while these cost models have, you know, significantly increased the number that comes out, a lot of buyers aren't able to obtain that on the open market, especially given the economic conditions we're in.
Very good. Uh, with that, I'm going to close testimony, uh, unless there's questions for the appellant or staff, and I'll be looking for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just can't get past these two comparables that sold in T. Just square footage is, you know, it's up there. The market is sustaining these costs, unfortunately.
We have, we do have a new recommendation from the Department of Equalization of eleven million three twenty-three eight sixty.
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal, sustain the recommendation.
To go with the new recommendation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. I do want to thank all, uh, that have testified.
Okay.
We are now at the eleven forty, uh, nine-mile S D LLC. Is this person on the phone? We have them on the phone, so go ahead and proceed, Carla.
Our next appeal is parcel number two sixty dot five zero dot three one dot zero zero five. It's located eleven oh eight West Cedar in Beersford. We do have a recommendation after reviewing the income approach to value that the appellant supplied to the equalization office. After we reviewed the income approach, uh, the land value will stay the same at a hundred and fifteen thousand thirty-three dollars, and the improvements would be lowered from one point one, one million one hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars to one million ninety-eight dollars, six, one million ninety-eight thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, or total valuation of one million two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-two.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? If, uh, you would please give your name and address, um, for the record, please.
Um, my name is Nareen Ravi Nutella. Um, I'm with the, I'm the tax, uh, uh, payer representative. Um, you want my mailing address?
Any address you would like to provide for us, sir?
Yes, it's sixty sixty Poplar, P O P L A R Avenue, Suite four hundred, Memphis, M E M P H I S, Tennessee, three eight one one nine.
Thank you. What would you like us to know, sir?
Sorry, say it again?
What would you like us to know? Uh, do you have information? Testimony evidence that the, the property that we're discussing now is assessed, um, inappropriately too high uh, in comparison to comparable property?
Uh, yeah, we, we, uh, agree with the assessor's recommendation, uh, based on the, um, the income stream of the property, so we agree with the million two hundred and thirteen thousand six eighty-two.
Move to approve the, the compromise.
Second.
Any comments, questions concerning the motion? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, I want to thank all involved.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take us to the, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Can we see if that person is available on the phone? Waiting for confirmation?
I was very familiar with that last property.
Oh.
Were you?
Yeah. The, the previous seller uh, was an opposing party in a divorce that I handled that, that went on for like five years. And he sold that building. Al's wife all did, sold that, and then that ended everything. Yeah. So, he put a lot, he wasn't my client, his wife was, but he put a lot of work into that building to get it sold.
Sherry? Carla, we did have RSVP that this person would be on the phone.
Look at it now.
Huh?
We had a line out there. My goodness, they move fast to the treasurer's office.
I'm Mr. Wayne Tannenbaum with Pivotal Tax Solution RSVP'd with phone number.
Okay, we're still waiting. We have a couple minutes yet.
Any correspondence with him after?
We have him. Very good. Sir, Carla will, if it's all right with you, we'll get started here. Carla will give a, a, a presentation, and then we'll ask for your name and address to be entered into the record. Thank you. Carla, please go ahead.
Okay.
Our, our next appeal is parcel number two sixty dot five six dot zero one dot zero zero one H. It's owned by Hudson Base Camp LLC, located at fourteen hundred West Cedar in Beersford. It is a Dollar General store built in two thousand six. It has approximately nine thousand square feet. The building value is currently assessed at six hundred and twenty-two thousand five sixty-three. Our lot is being assessed at a hundred and nine thousand seven forty-five. We are recommending no change. The subject is still well below comparable sales and assessments. If you go to page three, you can see where four Dollar General stores sold in Lincoln County. Um, all are being assessed on the cost approach to value. Um, the next slide shows some, uh, Minnehaha County comps. They're just to show that Dollar General stores are selling in the greater Sioux Falls or in, in greater Lincoln County, um, in Minnehaha County, just all over. We have tons of Dollar General sales, um, overall. Currently, the Dollar General store in Beersford is being assessed at sixty-nine dollars per square foot. The cost comparables are ranging between fifty-six and one oh six per square foot. The market is indicating a valuation between one eleven and two oh seven a square foot. Uh, you can see on the next page where the map is indicating where the subject property is located and the comparables. Uh, the second map shows where the, uh, Minnehaha County comps are located. We do have, um, we just showed you on an overall, the, the spreadsheet shows, um, like an overall average price per square foot is at eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And again, our subject property is at sixty-nine dollars per square foot. With that information, uh, again, the assessor's office is recommending no change, and we'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none. Uh, sir, if you'd give your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, my name is Jake Polich. Um, and the address is two zero two North Lindsay Road. Lindsay is L I N D S A Y. Uh, Suite two zero one, Mesa, Arizona, eight five two one three.
Thank you. What would you like to share with us, sir?
Um, yes, so, um, we, we also submitted an evidence packet. Um, are you folks looking at that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Just want to make sure. So, um, yeah, so we do, you know, basically, we came in, um, we have a sales comparison approach. Um, we do just have the one sale, but it is much closer and much, you know, it's basically right next door to the subject property, um, and it's also newer than the, um, the assessor's sales and their evidence. Um, so that will be on, let's see. Apologize, this is miss, this is missing the page number. So one, two, so that page eight is where it starts, and then nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are the background data for that sale. Um, and then we also provided on page thirteen a cost approach. Excuse me. Using Marshall and Swift, um, applied some extra feature value and some entrepreneurial profit um, to the property to just add some, to make sure we're accounting for everything there. On the following pages, we have our Marshall and Swift backup, which is where we get our, uh, price per square foot, depreciation rate, and everything like that, um, along with the multipliers. And then page nineteen of the packet, which is incorrectly numbered at the bottom, page fourteen, is our land sales comparable grid. Um, which obviously, there's not a ton of land sales around with it being such a rural area, so we went out a little bit further, but you can see the, the data for those on the following pages. Um, and yeah, just like I said, the only thing I want to make sure to point out is that we do have, our sale is much newer, much closer than any of the appraisers' sales, and their sale comp looks like sale comp number five actually supports a reduction as well, so, um, and that, that was all we had.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Any que- uh, questions for staff again?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I, I, the appellant probably has a pretty good point here. He's got a comparable sale just down the street. I'm very familiar with that building that he uses as the comp. The rest of the comps that the assessor's office used here, like in the T Harrisburg area, not in the Beersford area, those are two distinct commercial uh, areas that have different economies. I guess I would just like to ask the, the assessor's office if you've got any response to that concern.
That is taken into account on our assessments is the location. Um, we did review the appellant's Marshall and Swift valuation. I mean, he's off by sixteen years on the, the, the year of construction. Um, you know, the entrepreneurial cost is to deduct it. That's part of a base cost, um, with the cost approach to value. Um, also, you know, he, he considered the, um, quality of the building to be something less than what it was. If I wanted to result in a lower value, I'd use a lower quality as well in fighting the, in a, an assessment. But, you know, just where, I understand the, um, Marshall and Swift valuation service. I used to use it for about twenty years in the assessment practice. And when we take our information and use our Marshall Swift numbers or our information, we were coming up with, um, a very similar value of the seven hundred and thirty-two thousand three oh eight. Again, that's part of our, um, local cost is considered in, uh, and location factor is part of that seven hundred and thirty-two thousand that we're recommending.
You know, if I may comment on your, your comment as well. Um, if you look at the, the value um, per square foot on the land that we're using, you can see a drastic difference, even in the Minnehaha County assessor's office, between Garrettson and Sioux Falls. I mean, that's, that's part of where we're making our adjustment as well, overall, on the property value.
Yeah, I, I mean, my gut just tells me it's a little difference between T and Harrisburg against Beersford.
Would you like to present a?
Can I?
Motion, please.
Well, if he wants to make one quick comment.
Uh, I'll take one more comment, sir.
Yeah, just one last comment. Um, she said that we were off by sixteen years on the year the building was built. Um, if you're familiar with the Marshall and Swift valuation service, it has a year built and an effective year. Our effective year is actually two thousand and ten. So really, we gave the building about four years of leeway, because the effective year is what the depreciation is based off, not the year built. Um, so I just wanted to point out that we are actually making, making up for that more and giving the building four years off on the depreciation compared to the assessor.
Very good. Uh, look for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was going to motion to deny and substate our recommendation from our assessor.
I have a motion to deny the appeal. Is there a second? Hearing none, I'll ask for a, a replacement motion?
No, here, here's what I was going to say. I mean, I'm probably not going to get any support for my motion based upon the current composition. So, um, I'll reluctantly, uh, make a second here.
I do have a second now. Uh, any comments, concerns, questions? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No. Uh, unfortunately, though, it would, I will need a alternative motion. An affirmative?
Commissioner?
To grant his appeal?
Yeah, I'll grant his appeal, but with the following. I'll value the lot at the one oh nine seven forty-five, and I'll value the building at five forty-five. For a total of?
Seven, is that seven sixty-four two ninety-five? No. I did my math wrong.
Uh, one oh nine.
Six fifty-four, seven forty-five.
Yep.
Yeah, seven forty-five plus five forty-five.
All right, is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll look for a second.
You're lowering it by how much total?
Uh, so take six twenty-two and subtract five forty-five, and that works out to be?
Seventy-seven thousand five sixty-three.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second that, but I'm, I'm very reluctant on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I don't agree with that.
Any comments, questions concerning? Otherwise, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
To move us along, I will grant this, this year. Thank you, yes. Congratulations, sir. You have a adjustment.
We see you next year.
Uh, that takes us to the, um, twelve o'clock. Is there anybody in the audience representing Tanner LLC? If, if you'll give us a second, she'll give a presentation, and then we'll ask you to come up. Thank you. Carla, please go ahead.
You want to get the? Our next appeal is parcel number two eighty-three dot one two dot zero eight dot zero zero zero. It's owned by Tanner LLC, located, uh, addresses between twenty-seven hundred and twenty-eight twenty East Bison Trail in Sioux Falls. It's a multifamily, uh, property consisting of sixty-eight units built in twenty twenty. We currently have an assessed value of nine million seven hundred and eight thousand five oh four on the structures. The land is being assessed at five hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight thirty-four for a total valuation of ten million two hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight. This was appealed at the local um, board with no change. The income and expense data was requested, um, to all multifamily unit own, owners in Lincoln County this summer of twenty twenty-two. Um, no information had been obtained on this property as of today's date. The subject is below the sales market and in line with comparable assessments with older units. Our recommendation is no change to the assessment. Um, you can see on page three, we have, um, some properties that have sold in Lincoln County, uh, comps one, two, and three. The fourth and the fifth comp are properties that are comparable. They, uh, sold in Minnehaha County. Currently, the assessment on the subject property is a hundred and one dollars per square foot, or hundred and fifty thousand six eighty-one per unit. The land is at two dollars a square foot. Our sales comparison, and this is with Minnehahas, between one oh seven and one forty-four a square foot, or a hundred and sixty-five thousand to a hundred and ninety-six thousand two fifty per unit. Our cost comparables, which are just the Lincoln County comps, are between a hundred and three and a hundred and eighteen dollars per square foot, or a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six thirty-nine and a hundred and seventy-two three hundred and forty- dollars per square foot or a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six thirty-nine and a hundred and seventy-two, three hundred and forty-three per unit. Um, and again, our subject property is a hundred and one dollar per square foot. Our comps are being valued on the Lincoln County side at two dollars and twenty-five cents, um, for the land value to four seventy-five per square foot. Our next series of slides show where the subject property is located to the comparables that we're using. Our last slide is a median price, uh, per square foot or per unit, which is between one twenty-six and one seventy-nine per unit. Again, the subject property is at a hundred and fifty thousand, six eighty-one per unit. With that, staff will stand by for any questions.
Forgive me. Any questions for staff? That would be, uh, okay for you to come up, sir, if you'd like to testify. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, uh, my name is Blake Hyde. Um, our office at forty-six fifteen South Tech Link Circle in Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Welcome.
Hello. Um, so yes, I was, uh, just listening, um, to their prior comments here. Um, the, I guess the records I'm showing, I, I pulled up the, 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 the value prices or what they valued the, the listings they had on their comps. And a lot of those are value, I don't see anything above one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars a unit outside of our properties. The ones that we're, we're showing have their assessed values are ninety-two thousand a unit, a hundred and twenty-six thousand a unit, ninety-eight thousand a unit, a hundred and fifteen thousand a unit. So I guess they're, they're comparing, I guess, sales prices. I guess I'm going off of what other, other the projects similar to ours have been assessed for. Um, and I guess my, my thoughts on this is, I guess, I'm, as far as values go, I don't know what they would sell for, I guess. I'm just looking, I'm trying to compare assessed value to assessed value, not, not, uh, what other properties sold for to our assessed value.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, I just want to flush that point out. So you know what the, what state law requires is us to assess at fair market value?
Yep.
Which obviously fair market value is based upon recent sales. Have you got some other sales data?
Um, no, but, but I do have like, so the, the assessments are supposed to be equal as well, correct? Across the board, like properties are supposed to be assessed equally?
Right. Did you see down here where these are the unit prices?
Yes, but also, so the, the seventy-six nineteen bill, you guys have assessed that one at a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a unit? Is that accurate?
A hundred and thirteen. Where's that at?
It's the one hundred and seventy-two and right at the bottom.
Right here.
That's your, that's your assessed value?
Per unit.
On that property?
Yes.
All right, let me find another one of these, um, the seventy-eight hundred Townsley. So you've assessed that at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand unit, which is what I have on my sheet too, but that is the highest one, um, that I can find on my sheet. Um, you guys have Whisper Ridge Commons up anywhere?
Did it sell?
It sold for thirty-one million dollars.
Yeah, I, that wasn't used as a comparable on this property because those are more of an apartment style.
I guess my point on that one is, is you get, it sold for thirty-one million dollars, but it was assessed at twenty million dollars, which is sixty-six percent of sales price. So if, if, I guess if we're, we're using, if we're giving a thirty-three percent discount to sales price to assess value, is that across the board?
Sir, do you have a, a similar property that you'd like to present that is in comparison of your assessment?
Uh, yes, I'll start with, uh, Whisper Ridge Commons is very similar to ours. It's a hundred and forty-five units. It is assessed at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars per unit. It's completely done. It's sold for seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand and is assessed for eighteen million dollars right now. That is the closest one to ours for a comp. It is twenty-five thousand dollars under our current one and fifty thousand dollars under the one that's next, which is phase two.
Do you have any images of it so we can see how that one compares or, or?
Its location.
Yeah, any of that information?
Refinements.
I don't have that, no.
Carla, would you mind trying to find that property for him then and have it show up for us, please?
Can you give me the parcel number?
Do you have the parcel number, sir?
Um, yes. It's two eight one dash five nine, zero zero, A one, zero A.
Two eight one, what was it again?
Five nine.
Five nine?
Two eight one, five nine, zero zero, A one, zero A.
Carla, before you enter your password, will that be disclosed?
What's that?
I just want to make sure you realize your pass, if you're punching your passcode in, that it's not.
It's blocked.
It will be blocked. Very good, thank you.
This one that you're comparing to, sir, does this have the same amenities as the one in question?
It's very similar, yes. They're all townhome style, attached garages with a clubhouse.
Same, same finishes, same rental, same?
Similar age.
You know, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't have access to interiors. I didn't, we didn't build it, so I'm, I can't answer all those questions.
Bear with us, we'll try to do a little work for you here, see if we can come up with some information.
So what was your question? What did you have?
Do you happen to know what the size, average size of the unit is on those?
I don't. So I requested the, the comp sheets, your guys' worksheets for all the values. And I guess I, I couldn't make sense of square footage or how the values were figured on all the comp sheets that I requested from you guys.
What's the square footage of your units?
Uh, they're anywhere from twelve hundred to sixteen hundred.
We, we have an average of fourteen eleven, I think is what we had on the first slide.
Okay.
Average unit is fourteen hundred.
We have a?
It looks like the, the Whisper Ridge one is, they look like they're about a thousand square feet. Eleven hundred square feet. I mean, they're, they are smaller units.
How old is that property?
Um, those, yeah.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen versus twenty twenty. I mean, when you're using the cost approach, all those little things, depreciation, unit size, they all?
Do you have any other property for reference then, sir?
Um, yeah, another one is close, is seventy-four hundred South Holman. I believe that was on your guys' original list you'd sent me as well.
Okay, that one we should be able to find easily then?
I can provide a parcel number of that if needed.
Do you have that one?
The Holman, yes. Two eight one dash eight three, oh three, zero, zero, eight, A.
Yeah, that's here in your packet that you submitted.
How large is this one?
So that's a hundred and seventy-two units.
Built when? What's the age of this one?
Those are, um, a thousand twenty-four square feet, built in two thousand and twelve.
If you go down to building five, I mean, the sum of those are sixteen hundred and nineteen square feet, I think, I think.
That is correct.
Very significantly throughout the project, as do ours.
Yeah. So most of these properties you're using are two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and they're smaller in size too?
I mean, it doesn't look like this one would be that much smaller. I see, I see a lot of sixteen hundred and nineteen square foot units here. I would imagine those would average out to somewhere close as far as square footage goes.
And what's the per unit assessment on those?
That one, per unit, my calculation, so a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and eighteen dollars.
The majority of the buildings here are averaging, uh, around twelve hundred square feet a unit, so.
So are still a couple hundred square feet less.
If you guys, our, our, I mean, our average finish price was around a hundred dollars a square foot. That's what you guys assessed value. So two hundred square feet would be twenty thousand dollars. As opposed, you know, it's, the values are thirty-five and fifty-five thousand apart. So like I said, I'm, I'm not looking to be assessed for these same amounts. I just don't. I don't feel it's fair that our renters have to pay more. I'd like it to be, I guess, equally assessed per the market so our renters don't have a disadvantage on costs as opposed to other buildings. Um, as far as newer comps, as, as from what I've seen, I don't, I know you're, you want something more recent. I am, from what I've seen, I, there's not many sales that take place, so it's hard to, you know, it's not like single family homes where there's multiple sales.
Do you pass along all your costs to the customer?
No.
To the renter?
Um, no. Some have to be passed along. Obviously, we can only pass along what the market will absorb.
Well, unless you're operating at a loss, you're passing on all costs because that goes into how you configure your?
We're definitely passing along a majority of the cost, but there's, there's obviously a max that we can rent anything for. So obviously, we try to get everything, the budget has to work. They, our units out there run out between twelve and eighteen hundred dollars a month.
So we did request income, in, income information throughout this whole entire process and we still have no income information.
Was that a la, in testimony on this one, uh, any further questions though? I'd ask for a motion.
I'm gonna have a motion to deny.
Okay, is there a second? I have a motion, a second, to deny and stick with the, uh, department's recommendation.
Yes.
Uh, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. We have two more for you, sir. Um, uh?
It's, it's all gonna be the same stuff.
So I, my recommendation is, um, you know, to make it easier for you in the future, is to bring the documents to clearly show, you know, the square footage, year built, location, those types of things.
Yep.
If they truly are not equitable between the two, then we can see it. Right now, we're not being able to process and understand what you're trying to, versus what the department's given us.
No, I appreciate your time. We'll try that.
Carla, have you seen the other two, the adjustments that have been made?
There are no adjustments.
Well, there's two, two other properties.
Yeah, the, the recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, Carla, is the stick, but the original.
That is correct.
So, uh, is there anything else you'd like to share on the other two?
Carla, is the original amount then that you have, that I have on here, what you were talking about? Because I've got the NADC two at seven million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eight, and the NADC at seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four fifty-six.
What number are you on, Sherry?
I'm just looking at the, um, zero, 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 well, the second and third Tanner LLC properties.
Yeah.
The zero, zero, zero and zero, zero, one.
Those have been made.
So the assessor recommendation on, uh, two eighty-three, twelve, zero nine, zero, 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 the land to stay at seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four fifty-six, and the structure value at seven million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three oh eight for a total valuation of eight million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, one seventy-four.
Is that what your record shows?
Yep.
That's what's on mine.
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I'd ask for a motion on this property.
So, uh, move to, um, deny the appeal, sustain the recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, and one last, any other comments before we move on that one?
Uh, no, I said, it's, it's all gonna be the same.
All right. Well, if you have further questions for next year or later, you could either call the department of acquisition, speak with that, have them walk through it, or you can call myself, or I'm sure one of the commissioners helped walk through.
I look at the income approach.
Yep, so, uh, I'd ask for a motion on property two eight three, one two, zero nine, zero, zero, one.
Move to deny appeal, sustain recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? A motion, a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did that in the wrong way.
That's all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you have questions.
And I'm actually, I'm actually the next one too at the slate.
Oh, very good.
Welcome back.
Uh, so our next appeal is J, GJM Properties LLC. Slate would be right after that.
Okay, I'm, I guess.
Yeah.
And, and again, the slate one's gonna be the same thing. So if you guys want to make a motion on that one too, I can.
Well, let's do these in order. Sorry. She'll give a little presentation, then we'll ask you to come up. You'll give your name and address. Thank you, sir.
Is this the one there's an agreement on?
Yeah.
Can we just cut to the quick then?
Just say, state what the agreement is, please, for the record.
Okay, the appellant said they were gonna be here.
They are here.
Okay, so our recommendation is to remove the structures as, uh, we, uh, noticed that they were gone. They actually during the appeal, they said that the greenhouses, uh, were removed. So our recommendation is to remove the structure values and keep the land value at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six eighty-two.
Okay, uh, sir, is there anything you'd like to share?
No, just basically the greenhouses have been removed.
Okay, I'll accept that. Is there a motion?
Uh, move to adopt the compromise.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the compromise. Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you all for working that through. So now we'll go to the Harvard Creek, or Harvest Creek, excuse me, uh, twelve twenty. Gentleman is here, so we can proceed on that one.
The next appeal is parcel number two eight three dot two one dot zero zero dot A one hundred. It's owned by Slate and Harvest Creek LLC, LLC, uh, located at fifty-two hundred to fifty-four twenty-eight South Radcliffe Avenue in Sioux Falls. It is a new construction, multifamily, built between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. It's con, still considered incomplete assessment to date. It consists of a hundred and nineteen units. The assessed value for the structure is thirteen million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three oh eight. The lot value is at one million, fifty-six thousand, four eighty-three for a total assessed value of fourteen million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven ninety-one. Again, the project is incomplete. On the second page, we show, um, at what stages each building is at. It's anywhere between, uh, ninety-three percent complete and I think the lowest is sixty-one percent. Um, there was an inspection in October of twenty-one, October twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two to determine what percentage of completion they were at. Um, the same comparables are used on page three. Currently at an incomplete project value, we are assessing the subject property at eighty-eight dollars per square foot or a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four ten, per unit. Our sales range is between one oh seven. Now, these are Minnehaha County sales as well. Um, and these are completed structures, uh, between a hundred and seven and a hundred and forty-four dollars per square feet or a hundred and sixty-five thousand or two, a hundred and ninety-six thousand, two fifty per unit. Our cost range is between one oh three and one eighteen per square feet. And these are strictly the Lincoln County assessments. Our unit range is between one thirty-nine, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six thirty-nine and a hundred and sixty thousand, forty-five dollars per unit. Those are, again, completed unit pricing. The next two slides are, are mapped, showing where our comparables are located. With that?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Any questions for staff? Have the gentleman like to come up and speak again? Hi again, and again, name and record, or an address for the record.
Blake Hyde, forty-six fifteen South Tech Link Circle, Sioux Falls. So, again, I'd just like to point out on this one, as she said, there's a multiple buildings here that are incomplete, a lot at sixty-one percent. Um, and again, the, the assessed value was amongst the highest, on the, definitely on the high side of all the projects of their comps that have been sold. At sixty, I'd say the project total, eleven-one, was probably seventy percent complete. Um, and also, with their comps, the, I guess, the Minnehaw comps and Lincoln County comps are, are significantly different as far as apartment buildings go for sales prices. So, I guess, we don't consider any Minnehaw comps when we're valuing Lincoln County property.
We don't either.
Just so I understand, sir, are you contesting that percentage of completion?
The percentage of completion is accurate. I guess, I'm contesting that our assessed value at a hundred and twenty-six thousand is still higher than most of the other projects that are fully completed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any questions for the appellant?
Run that, run that by again, sir. You're contending that they're higher.
Our assessed value at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars per unit.
Yep.
Is higher than, than most of the comps, and all the comps are completely finished and completely occupied, where ours is approximately only seventy percent complete.
Have we made adjustments on that for, for that, what he just answered? Do you have a, do you have a response on that?
I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Well.
We were.
I'm, I'm just, if I may, again, you're saying that this one's hi- uh, higher than the comps, but that the comps, I see, is one seventy-three, one seventy-two, one sixty, one thirty-nine, one forty-five.
Those, those, I guess, those comps are, are, the one seventy-two is our own comp, which is an outlier.
Okay. So, yours, but this is that.
So, like, if you look at, um, the seventy-eight-hundred through seventy-eight sixty-four Townsley, that unit is assessed at a hundred and forty thousand dollars a unit, fully completed and fully occupied. Ours is at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a unit, at, you know, I'm not sure what all the averages are, but I would, I would estimate the project was seventy percent complete.
So, if you did the math, and you were a hundred percent complete today, based on the math that we're given here, what would your value be, and then what's the difference?
Well, I don't, I guess, I don't agree with the, with the top line value, but, um.
You understand what I'm asking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's, what, what's the difference? Fast forward your project to a hundred percent complete, and what's the per-unit value?
Fast forward my product to a hundred percent complete, I would say, based on comps, our, our a hundred percent complete value should be a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a unit.
But using the county's math, what would, what would it result?
I guess, the county's math, I, I, the county's math is on this sheet, and it makes no sense to me, so I don't know how to figure the county's math.
I'll ask the county that, then. If they, if he's a hundred percent complete, what is his per-unit value?
Or just give me the percentage of complete, and you can.
Well, if you just take the hundred and twenty-five thousand times a hundred and forty percent, or the forty percent that's now incomplete, if we're considering it to be sixty percent complete, or forty percent incomplete, you'd be at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's just my rough math, trying to follow your.
So, at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that puts him three thousand dollars above the very top end comparable of one seventy-two.
Right, and if you look at the sales, I mean, that's right in line with where, where they're selling for, and this is the newest.
But if you look at the sale, are, should we compare assessed values to sales values, or should we be comparing assessed values to assessed values?
If we compare assessed values to assessed values, the, the rough math that we did considers that every building is at sixty percent. Some of them are at ninety-three percent. So, I mean, if we really wanted to do the math, we'd have to go building by building by building.
Sorry, I've got a question. Ethan, help me out. Um, at sixty percent complete, we have a, a value of a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Correct. I mean, you, you saw the slide where we're showing, not all of them are at sixty percent, so I mean.
Huh? The math is wrong, then.
I would think we'd go by an average percentage, and not just a strictly sixty percent, if we were.
I need to, I need to know what that percentage is, because if I use that as a sixty percent, I get a total valuation of two hundred and eight thousand dollars, because that's, you take that number divided by point six to get its total value.
You're working with a lot of different stages.
I know, that's why I'm, I need, we're talking averages, though. We got an average of one twenty-five, and I got an average of sixty. So, I need to know what those two numbers, I have the one twenty-five. I need to know what that average is, because otherwise, we've got the wrong math.
I don't know if all these buildings are the same size, either.
Sure, but it's, they're not, but it's gonna be an average. There are multiple different styles. I know. It's what we have to work with, though, here, guys, so. Appreciate everything.
Seven buildings, one, two, three, four, five.
So, when you ran, what you're trying to tell me, when you ran the comp, the computation of building fifty-two twenty at fifty-three percent, et cetera, et cetera, that's probably a larger, is, sir, I'm gonna ask you.
Yes, please.
So, are you familiar with which building is fifty-three twenty?
Yes.
Is that a larger per, square footage per unit?
Fifty-three twenty is a five-plex. Um, so, as the project, as a project.
Square footage per unit, that's what I'm curious about.
Square footage per unit, uh, they're pretty similar. I would say our average is fourteen hundred square feet a unit across the board.
Across the board, so they're relatively set. Okay, that answers my question there. Thank you. So, we're, we're not a lot of difference in that. I really would like to have an accurate completion average, then.
There, I'm looking at a unit that is, uh, it's two-story style. It's one thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet completed. It's, uh, one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and six, not including any land value.
Yeah, I, I would say we're, because we don't have any number lower than sixty-one percent completed, uh, to a high of ninety-three, I would say, I would have to believe that our average is considerably higher than sixty percent completed. So, I'm going to then extrapolate that we are still accurate in our one twenty-five, because using a sixty percent, we would be incorrect. So. That gentleman, I'm looking for a recommended, or a motion.
Yeah, I'm just, wish the math would have been there. It's, I, I think, if you fast forward to being a hundred percent complete, you're above the highest comparable.
Correct.
Absent any other more precise math. So, could you go back to the comps on that, please?
The, the largest one, it looks like, right here, is gonna be comp number two, fourteen twenty-eight. However, it's built in two thousand eight, so you gotta factor in size and depreciation into all of these comps.
That is also a four-plex. That's, that's irrelevant as a comp.
I'm looking for a motion.
How many units are there?
Total, a hundred and eighteen units. Sorry, a hundred and nineteen.
We could complete them all, couldn't we?
That's what I did.
What is that per unit, then?
That's what I told them.
What was it?
I'll make a motion. I value the land at one million fifty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I'll value the structures at thirteen million.
Flat, straight, okay?
Straight. That's a reduction of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and eight dollars of value.
Well, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Any comments, questions, concerns concerning the motion? If not, I'll ask Sherry to call the roll.
Commissioner Scherens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you. Can I get one clarification? When I'm comparing values to values, do we compare assessed values to assessed values, or are assessed values to other sales values?
You actually look at both, sir. Sometimes, you need to make sure that, that we're not above market as well, but you're trying to compare similar property to assessed value of properties.
So, assessed to assessed, per similar properties?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Carla, where are we at?
We are at item nine nineteen, Village, uh, Three Fountains.
Very good. That name's familiar.
Hi, sir.
Mind if I hand?
She'll give a little presentation. I'll ask you to come up, give your name and address. No worries, sir.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eighty-one dot seven-seven dot zero-three dot zero-zero-one. It's owned by Village at Three Fountains, address at two thousand to twenty-two ten West Trevy Place in Sioux Falls. It is a multifamily unit, built in two thousand fourteen, and then continued into two thousand fifteen. It has approximately a hundred and eighty-two units. Our, uh, current assessed value is seventeen million three hundred and two thousand one eighty-five on the structures. The lot is being valued at one million four hundred and forty-one thousand seven eighty-three, for a total valuation of eighteen million seven hundred forty-three thousand nine sixty-eight. Uh, this did go to local board. The local board made no change. Our current, uh, assessment is, uh, the eighteen million, after reviewing the current data received. The income approach was not used. The income approach that was determined, uh, the valuation at eighteen million ninety-two thousand seven oh five, so it's slightly less than the cost approach, but close. Um, the current assessment is on the cost approach, and reflects other-like properties, as well as the sales market. We're recommending no change. Here are some sales that we felt were relevant in, um, determining that we are not over-market value. Keep in mind that, um, you know, our assessments, we consider all three approaches to value, but we're currently assessing on the cost approach to value. These are some sales that took place, um, between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. All these properties are being valued on the cost approach. The last one is an assessment equity. Currently, our subject property is being assessed at eighty-six dollars a square foot, or, uh, per unit cost of a hundred and two thousand nine eighty-nine. Our sales are indicating sale prices between sixty-four dollars and one forty dollars a square foot, or unit pricing of a hundred and eighty-seven six twenty-seven to a hundred and forty-three thousand six sixty-five. So, it's right, uh, on the lower end, but it's within the range. Our cost approach is, uh, valuation between fifty-seven and ninety-three dollars per square foot, or unit pricing of seventy-eight thousand eight forty-three to one twenty-nine two forty-four per unit. So, again, right in the middle of our cost approach. Our next slide shows the comparables and where the subject is located, all within Lincoln County. This is some information submitted by the owner that we show, are showing in, um, part of our presentation. Um, they're using an average, and it's not an approach that we use in Lincoln County to determine property values. All the comps that are being shown are valued strictly on the cost approach, using size, quality of materials, workmanship, style, amenities, and age when determining the value. By using this approach, the properties are being treated equally. With that, staff will stand by for question.
Sir, if you'd like to come up, give your name and address, please, for the record.
All right. Thank you, uh, Jay Hedley, um, twenty-four oh one West Trevy Place in Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Welcome.
That's where I'm at. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Um, I think the information is on there. I have some handouts, but I think it's similar to what's included in the attachments as well. So, um, you know, fast forward, or rewinding last year, our notice, we got, increased our property values, our assessments twenty-five percent. Kind of just let it go. Understood everybody's was kind of increasing at a similar, a similar level across the board on multifamilies. Just kind of let that go. Got to this year, got another notice that increased us another twenty-six percent on this particular apartment, and just looking at the, the math, the twenty-five and, and then twenty-six percent on a higher base, actually equates to a fifty-seven percent increase that we, we've seen over the last two years in our, in our property valuation, and, and subsequently, what we assume will be our property tax bill as well. Um, so, I, I, you know, appreciate the information on the sales and costs and things like that, that were put together, um, and I don't dispute necessarily any of that. One of the things that we looked at is just, um, you know, in comparison to other properties, we feel are there similar properties, that Village at Three Fountains by far had the highest per-unit valuation, and really was what our attempt to explain in the chart was, that, you know, I, I get that there's a cost and the sales, but all of these other properties would have similar costs and sales that would be applied to them, and somehow, ours is significantly higher than any other property in, in Lincoln County. And while I do feel that we have good quality products, I don't know that, given the age and, and amenities, that it's the highest one, even compared to ones that are, are more recently built, and other ones of our own properties that it include on here that are much lower valued per unit as well, with higher amenities. So, in looking at the, the information, the ninety thousand eight twenty-seven was just taking five comparables and, and the, um, assessment that they were given this year, and, you know,
which?
I, oh, I can, let me hand this out. Somebody made a quick adjustment to it. Here you go.
Do you have other properties today, sir, or just this one?
Just this one. Yep.
We do have a little bit of a time crunch, so.
Yeah, no, understood.
Yep, I'm looking at this now. My question, sir, on this list, which is the most comparable, uh, property to the one that you have at Village? Is it Spring Creek Apartments, by chance?
Probably, uh, Garden, in terms of location. Garden Villas, in terms of location.
Garden Villas, just not, not nearly as big.
Yep, not nearly as big, and in terms of the, maybe the style as well, you just look at it, and it's probably more comparable, tuck-under. Um, you know, some of these here are much, much newer and, and larger.
The differential on that's about six thousand, no, yes, about six thousand dollars per unit, on a per-unit basis. Carla, I'm gonna ask, if I may, uh, Garden Villas, is that one of our comps that we used?
You know, we, uh, we took the list that he had, and we started doing our comparison, and that must have been the edit you made. Is, you added Garden Vi- the Garden Villas, so we weren't able to do any type of comparison, because we'd just seen this today. You know, we looked at Ed- Edgewater Villas and Spring Creek, and, um, but, we can, we're looking up the Garden Villa.
But, to make a point on the stuff that was provided, um, the subject property here, uh, Village at Three Fountains is an average of eleven hundred square feet a unit, um, and none of the other comparables broke a thousand square feet a unit. So, that, that's the reason why this one's valued more.
That can easily justify six thousand, well.
Well, the rest would be about twelve thousand, if you take, or, I'm sorry, thirteen thousand, if you.
What's the average square footage of Garden Villas?
I'm not sure of that offhand.
But that's one of your comps, right?
Right.
We're finding.
Okay, we're, but we're, we're bumping time, and you know, like, time management. So, is there any questions for staff or the appellant? Is there a motion? If there's no motion, there must be questions.
I just would like to know what the average square footage is.
All right, then, there's our question.
Uh, I believe, doing this quickly, it's one thousand thirty-six square feet, so it would be the closest in size.
The Garden Villas. No, any idea in amenities, any of that?
Wait, wait, wait.
Um, as far as amenities goes, it is similar. uh, it is similar as far as the design of it. It has the attached garages below. It's got the covered decks above.
But, so there is two to three hundred square footage difference?
Uh, less than a hundred square feet.
Yeah, like sixty or so.
Any excess land between the two of them?
Well, this, the property being appealed is about double the size of land.
But is there?
But it's also about, uh, it's less than half the size of units here, number of units. So I would think they're pretty similar as far as the building, the land ratio, but I don't, I don't have the.
There's the square footage of the land. If you look at comp one, it just sold in, in September twenty twenty-one. It's very comparable to the subject property. It sold for hundred and hundred and seven dollars per square foot.
The land to building ratio is very similar. The, uh, the garden or the, yeah, what's it called? Garden, Garden Villas is a two point one two land to building ratio and the subject property is, um, two point zero six. So very close.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The question I have, I'm not, it's a, well, all these other properties sustained about a thirteen, sixteen, seven, five percent increase, and yet we have this property that has gone up over fifty percent almost in the past two years. I'm trying to wrestle with why has this gone up so disproportionately more than other ones?
I'm looking for a motion that would keep the land at the same, one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, eight seventy-three, placing the building structures at sixteen million, seven forty-two, one eighty-seven for a total of eighteen million, one eighty-four and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second, sir?
A reluctant second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Can you give me the structure value again?
Uh, sixteen million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven.
Sixteen, seven forty-two, one eighty-seven.
Yes.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good day.
Yep.
So what was that total again? Mr. Chair, that total?
Uh, eighteen million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, sixty dollars.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I need to see your number.
The land state at the same?
Yep.
Sixteen, seven forty-two, one eighty-seven.
Yep. Get that total.
Okay, well.
So you reduced it by what, seven hundred thousand, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Runner.
Am I incorrect in my total?
Nope, you're right. I just can't.
All right, thank you. Moving on.
You're never wrong, Chair.
No, I am wrong plenty of times.
I'm reminded.
Easier to fix it. When I make it, then later.
Okay, runner.
Is there anybody here representing, uh, the twelve forty? Thank you. Go ahead, Carla.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot five eight dot zero two dot zero zero five. It's Brenner, um, LLC located at five thousand South Broadband Lane in Sioux Falls. It is a mixed, mul- mixed-use office retail building built in two thousand seven. Uh, the square footage is thirty-three thousand, four seventy-five. It does have some lower level parking. Our current assessment went out at the building value, five million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine fifty-nine. The lot is being assessed at five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars for a total valuation of five million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine ninety-four. It did get appealed to local board and local board made no change. We do have a recommendation that we, after looking at some of the comparable properties, we did, uh, reduce the grade or the quality of construction on the subject property. Uh, the recommendation would bring down the square footage, price per square foot to a hundred and fifty-two dollars. So the assessment on the building would be lowered to five million, seventy-three thousand, four eighty-three. Page three shows some comparable properties that have sold of office buildings. With the fourth being a very recent sale, one, one, one which was not, um, used to determine the twenty twenty-three assessments. Currently with the recommendation, our subject property is being valued at a hundred and fifty-two dollars per square foot. The cost is showing a range between one fifty-eight and one ninety-five, so it is less, um, than the cost comparables. Our market is indicating a market range between one eighty and two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a square foot. Um, the map is showing where the subject property is locating, located in comparison with the comps. So they're all within Lincoln County with that.
Any questions for staff?
So your new adjustment total assessed value, uh, reduced to five million, six hundred, sixty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to come up, sir, and give your name and address, that'd be great. And I want to thank you for coming.
Yes, uh, I'm Brian Grady with Lloyd Companies. Um, office address is one oh one South Reed Street, suite two oh one, Sioux Falls. And, um, the only question I have for you is, is the, the score, gross square footage that you guys are using, uh, where you say it's a hundred and fifty-two dollars a foot. The, the gross square footage that got off your website was thirty-three thousand, four seventy-five, which would indicate a hundred and seventy-seven dollars a foot.
Better question is, what do you say the square footage is?
So, well, that, so we, here's, here's the, the difficulty, uh, for my world and, and their world. Is that they're looking at everything on gross square footage, which I get. Uh, we look at everything on net rentable square footage and, and it's, um, but that's kind of a total side comment. Um, but anyway, I did a re-analyze my numbers based on gross square footage to try to be consistent with how the county's looking at it. That's why I was just curious because I have a different number that I pulled out the website.
You had seen the adjustment that she has made prior to today, sir?
Yes, yeah, they contacted me last week.
Very good. And do you have any other property that you would like to present as evidence to say that we're?
I'm, I'm fine with the number.
You are fine with it?
I'm fine.
Just for the record, you're, you're accepting their recommendation?
I'm accepting the recommendation.
If you're all right with that, I'll ask for a motion to that effect.
Second.
I have a motion a second to accept the new recommendation from the Department of Equalization for this property?
So that's the five million, seventy-three thousand, four eighty-three and the five hundred and eighty-eight, zero thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes, thank you all. Any other questions? Otherwise? Oh, okay. I guess you're going to stick around a little. Give us a little bit of time.
Okay, our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot eight seven dot zero one dot A one hundred. It's owned by Lloyd Family Limited Partnership located at thirty-four hundred to thirty-six eleven Platinum Place in Sioux Falls. It is a multifamily property built in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. It has fifty-two units. Our current assessment is seven million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four on the structures. The lot is being assessed at one million, thirty-six thousand, one ninety-three for a total valuation of eight million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, four twenty-seven. The local board, uh, this was heard during local boards of equalization and the local board made no change. So we did request some in- income information from our multifamily properties last year in two thousand twenty-two. Um, as of today's date, we have not received any income information to do an income approach to value. Um, the sup-, uh, so the assessors making, recommending no change to the current assessment. Page three, you can see, um, probably seen these comparables before. We try to find town home, um, properties that have sold, so we can do, um, our three comparison, three approaches to value. So these town home properties sold in, uh, Lincoln County and Minnehaw County. Now we will consider only the Lincoln County properties when we're doing our cost approach to value. Currently, our subject property is being assessed at a hundred and seventeen dollars per square foot or a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six eighty-one per unit. Our sales indicates a sales range between one oh seven and one forty-four. That did include the Minnehaw County sales, looking at our sales comparison approach to value. Our cost approach, which is being considered and utilized in our assessments, show a cost range between one oh three and one eighteen per square foot or valuation per unit of one thirty-nine to s- one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six thirty-nine to one seventy-two, three forty-three per unit. So it's still within the range, but on the, the upper end of the range. Staff will stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I, I have some handouts.
Just name and address again for the record.
Yep, uh, Brian Grady, Lloyd Companies, one oh one South Reed Street, suite two oh one, Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Uh, could I supply some handouts?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It, they'll get entered into the record.
Yep. So, uh, yeah, I'll hand them off.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So what I just handed out was a commercial appraisal that was done in late twenty twenty uh, with the value of six million, one hundred and sixty thousand. The, one of the other pages is the appraised value with all the same assumptions, bringing them with the actual numbers for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then the, the third one is, um, you know, some properties that we manage that are similar as in, in the sense that they had their townhomes with attached garages. And, um, and obviously we have income data for those properties. And so I wanted to show, reflect how they are similar, uh, when we look at those from an income per unit basis and also an expense ratio basis. And, uh, and I thought it'd be, um, you'd be curious to see what the comparables are there as far as the assessed value per unit on those. So, uh, one thing I'd, I'd really like to start with is the appraisal versus actual. So you can see on that, you know, I don't know how familiar you are with, uh, you know, commercial appraisers and, and, um, uh, investment property, but basically NOI is kind of what you expect to receive, just like you buy a CD, right? You pay X amount, you expect to receive that, and that's kind of the, the cap rate, uh, which is, uh, your, your, uh, determines your NOI. So I use the, the same assumptions as far as cap rate, uh, as the appraisal used, which was a six percent cap rate. Add back the real estate taxes and it ends up being a seven point nine two cap rate. And just bringing that forward, and you can see the, the, the values have increased because income has increased. I will save the one caveat, uh, actually just met with the, the manager of the property yesterday, went and reviewed financials. If we annualize the first quarter, uh, we're going to see that NOI drop considerably. In fact, it'd be four hundred and ninety-eight thousand based on the first quarter annualize. Is there any questions I can maybe answer?
We're trying to get to the equalization of your property compared to similar properties. That's the objective here today.
Yep.
So if we can focus on that objective, um, that would be, yep, most advantageous for your.
Absolutely. And, and the, the reason I wanted to focus on the income approach is that that's what the commercial appraisers focus on primarily.
I'm going to ask you, sir, was it, was requested to have income on this property presented to you? To present to the board, the department? Do you know if that had been done, sir?
The, there was a blanket request that went out for financial statements last fall.
Okay.
And the owners chose not to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, keep in mind, we, we manage properties for.
Yeah, very good. I just, I, we use.
Hundreds of different owners. Yep. I, I, I would like to say though, I mean, after this is done, I would love the chance to work with the county. I, I think we do have a nice database of information that we could send somewhat anonymously, that they could really help the process.
Good, very good. Thank you.
I've got a question for staff. Um, why has the, so in two thousand twenty-two, it was valued at four point three million and then in twenty-three it popped up to eight point eight? What, what happened?
I mean, as you can see, the assessment history from twenty-one, twenty-two, these are appealed values. Um, they had a current appraisal on the property in twenty twenty, which they brought, did not bring to the board. But they said the value was only worth four point four million when their true assessment should have been six million. And the board lowered it to nearly two million than what it was worth. Uh, I, I understand the, the appraisal back in twenty twenty. It, it's not relevant to the twenty twenty-three assessments, in my opinion. Um, again, they appealed their value back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two when they were sitting on a current appraisal.
Okay, I think the point's been made.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I'm probably, I'm not only.
Let me ask the board first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, any questions from the board?
Well, yeah, I do just want to ask about that is, do you have any response to that?
I, I don't recall that the timing of, of when those appeals were done, uh, but the, obviously if, if, if the assessed value was below a commercial appraised value, we're not going to bring in the commercial appraised value and say, hey, please raise our value.
Okay, just address the question, sir, please.
So, um, yeah. I, I don't, I don't recall the, the timing of it, right? So that, that this refinance was going on late twenty twenty, closed December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And, and so I, I don't know which appeal that we're, we're referring to. Because if, if it would have been in November of twenty twenty, we would, didn't have the value, wouldn't have had the appraisal.
Uh, any further questions?
You, your assertion is this twenty twenty date is valid on here, right?
Uh, that, that's why I, I have the other one that basically brings the assumptions from that appraisal forward based on current financials.
Okay, board. Um, I'm looking for any further questions, otherwise looking for a motion.
I am requesting a forty-six percent increase, by the way.
Thank you.
So just so I'm clear, what are you asking the board? What are you asking the board to be the land value and the structure value?
I think they left the land value the same.
The land value, I, I would say should remain consistent.
Okay.
Um, and then the difference would be the structural value to, for, for a total of. Depends which way you look at it. So if you look at it from kind of a comparable per unit standpoint, it'd be closer to six point three six million. Uh, look in income or. Uh, look in income approach based on the twenty twenty two numbers, it'd be six point seven. That's the range, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at.
What was that first number you used, Commissioner?
Six point seven two two. That's on their actual.
Yep.
Twenty twenty two indicated stabilized value. That puts them at one twenty nine per unit, still on the low end. Think the median is probably somewhere in there around one sixty per unit. Based on the comps.
I would be looking for, uh, if you're looking for a number I have in mind, leaving the land at the one million.
Thirty six.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm at the wrong one now, hang on.
What's the structure? Six. Nine, three.
Did you come up with a land?
I have a, the land value remaining the same, the structure value is being six million, seven hundred fifty one thousand and forty one dollars. For a total of seven million, seven hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred and thirty four. Just looking to see if there's any weight to that mo- option.
I'll move for that motion, Commissioner.
Sherry, you got the numbers?
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. I encourage you to work with us, uh, on the income approach, and I think maybe there might be some more understanding between us.
So. Okay, can you, can you give that total again, because you, you.
The total is seven million instead of the eight million eight, we're seven million, seven, one eighty seven, two thirty four.
Get a one point one million dollar reduction off of the assessor's recommended value.
Okay, because I thought you said seven point seven million, seven million, one eighty seven total.
The seven million, seven hundred.
Seven hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and thirty four.
Eight point eight minus seven point seven.
Okay.
And I'm assuming the assessor will be back with a different number next year, so I encourage you to work with them before then.
Yeah, yeah, th- this is our highest assessment in our portfolio per unit.
But considerably less than what I would like to stick with there.
You did get a break off what your, uh, your own appraisal said.
Yes.
It, how, how so?
Well, uh.
If I can.
Your own appraisal said it was, uh, six point one million, um, in two thousand twenty, and the county valued it at four point four. So you get a two million dollar benefit.
Couple of years worth.
For a couple of years.
A process if you can visit, if you want to appeal it further, otherwise, again, for next year, I would encourage.
Likely will.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks.
Ginger.
A little bit behind, do we have anybody representing the Ginger L L L P? Anybody on the phone for them? Okay, but go ahead, we're well within the time.
Our next. Appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot nine seven dot zero eight dot zero one two A. It's owned by Ginger L L P, located at thirty eight oh four West Ninety Third Street in Sioux Falls. It is a stacked multifamily property built in two thousand eight. It has four units. Their current assessment on the structures is four hundred ninety one thousand, five thirty. The land is at fifty six thousand, one oh four for a total valuation of five hundred and forty seven thousand, six thirty four. Um, after reviewing all three approaches to value, the assessor recommends using the cost approach, no change to the current assessment.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
Is there anybody in the audience or on the phone or that would like to, um, represent this appeal? Hearing on, looking for a motion?
To deny.
Second.
Motion second to deny and stay with our, our Department of Equations recommendation. Sherry?
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. Uh, is there anybody here to represent West Point? We'll have to wait for three minutes.
Are they on, going to be on the phone?
I don't know. Um, we did not receive any type of RSVP and I believe West Point. Through Oak Brook is the same representative.
Okay, well, we'll wait.
Okay.
Three minute recess.
We do have a recommendation. If you want me to go through the entire presentation, I don't.
Nope.
Um, we have not heard from the appellant, whether they want to, uh, or if. Oh. I guess the appellant is here.
I, I thought we, uh, on this property, we, we got a call from David and.
Hang, hang on a second. You can't go back and forth to each other.
Okay.
Sorry.
You bet.
Carla, you have a recommendation?
We do have a recommendation on parcel number two eighty one dot nine four dot zero one dot zero zero one. Uh, we are recommending to lower the structure values to six million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three, three nine.
Which?
And leave the land value.
Which parcel are you on?
Two eighty one dot nine four dot zero one dot zero zero one.
Okay.
Yep.
Void property, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Structures at six million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three thirty nine, land value at four hundred and fifty six thousand, six seventy three. For a total valuation of seven million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, twelve dollars.
Very good. Any questions for staff?
Would you like to come up, sir, and give your name?
We passed this one already.
No.
No, I, I'm sorry, I think we, we'd kind of talked to the assessor's office and mutually agreed on their recommendations.
Time out. I need your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Todd Ernst, uh, six two oh four South Callington Circle, Sioux Falls.
Okay, Todd, just for the record, you are accepting?
Yes.
All right. Any questions for staff for the appellant? Otherwise, that, thank you.
Move, second, accept the recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have?
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot five five dot zero two dot zero zero three. Klarney Crossing LLC, located at forty three hundred to forty four twenty one, West Ninety Ninth Street in Sioux Falls. It is a multifamily property built in two thousand thirteen, has a hundred and forty two units. The current assessment is seventeen million, seven hundred and eighty three thousand, five twenty two on the structures. And one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, one forty nine on the. On the land for a total assessed million, uh, assessment of nineteen million, one thousand, six hundred and seventy one dollars. This was appealed to the local boards and made no change. Page three, you can see where we have our comparables, two of which sold in Lincoln County. Uh, the comparable four and five were town home type properties that sold in Minnehaw County. Uh, we only use the Lincoln County sales in determining our assessments. Currently, the assess per square foot of the subject property is a hundred and five dollars per square foot or a hundred and thirty three. Dollar, a hundred and thirty three thousand, eight fifteen per unit. The sales are indicating between a hundred and seven and a hundred and forty four dollars per square foot. Subject property is one oh five, so it's on the lower end. The market for per unit is between one sixty five and one ninety six, a hundred and ninety six thousand per unit. The costs, which are Lincoln County costs, are between one oh three and one eighteen per square foot or. A hundred and thirty nine thousand, six thirty nine to a hundred and seventy two thousand, three forty three per unit. Again, it's on the lower end of our cost range. With that. Staff will stand by for correct questions.
Any questions for staff? Todd, again, for the record, just a name and address, please.
Sure, Todd Ernst, six two oh four South Callington Circle, Sioux Falls.
What would you like to share with us?
I have, uh, some busy paper going on.
Sure. Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I, I, I can't argue that there have been, um, a number of, of sales. Um, over the last few years, we, we had out of, out of state, even out of, out of country. You know, buyers coming in and kind of established, you know, really some record lows. That was compounded by, you know, historically low interest rates. They came in for a period of time, established some extremely low comps. Um, and what I guess I'd like to point out in here, uh, is a couple of things. The first, the first page is just showing a few other comparable properties. And I, I can't figure out why I'm assessed so much higher than other comparable properties. Okay, so I, I, you know, I can't argue their taxes up. But what I can do is say, look, I want to be equalized with some of my comps. And on the back side is a little analysis I put together that, that kind of shows what, what rents have done in the last four years as well. In showing, uh, that in comparison to what we've seen in tax increases. So the, the first page, um, the data that, uh, Carl kind of mentioned about Klarney Crossing was right, assessed value per unit. We went and found five other properties and really can't figure out why we're so much higher. Prairie's Edge is, uh, another town home property, extremely similar, similar amenities, built in, again, in two thousand thirteen. Similar number of units. And what we did in here is that we went and pulled rents off of what you can find online. And really just trying to compare our rents to the subject property's rents. So, so each of these properties are, are, are higher rent properties than, than our property. Okay, yet we're assessed so much higher. So I, I don't have their financials, I don't have their data, but it just, it just doesn't at all seem equalized. So we came up with this, this form of the, this rent adjustment. You know, if the rents are higher, it's kind of bringing it down by that appropriate percentage. And we're coming up with, you know, the, the per unit value is so much lower, you know, ninety one thousand, when you take that, that sort of average of the comps. And we're, and we're not even asking for that. What, what I'm asking this commission for is just to keep my tax assessment the same as last year. Which is, um, the fourteen, five, nineteen figure. So. You know, again, my point is I'm, I'm so, you know, we're so far off, we don't, we don't at all seem equalized. We seem like there's, there's, there's a few properties that the assessor's office is kind of picking on. Um, and, and they, they believe that these properties are, are way higher value than they should. And there's some other properties that we can't figure out why they're getting such a, such a tax value break. And if you turn over to the backside, here's what I'd kind of show you too, what's also gone on. Is this is the last four years of gross potential rents on the property. And, you know, year by year, going from, you know, the, the nineteen twenty year, the twenty twenty one year, zero percent change in gross potential rents. Then a one percent change in gross potential rents, and we started to see that, tho- those rents, you know, eight percent and six percent. I think we've all kind of talked about rent increases, but the cumulative of that over a four year period is about fifteen percent in, in, increase in rents. But what we're also seeing in, in taxes here, and this is, I think, a problem for Lincoln County. If you look at what those, what those taxes have increased per year, taxes are dramatically increasing at a higher rate than. You know, what, you know, I guess what's perceived for what value is. So basically what we feel is that the assessor's office is extremely aggressive in trying to find what they consider full and true value. And, and this is their consideration, and they pick a few properties, and this is one of those properties that, that they're just really want to. You know, give, give that we think this, uh, you know, absurdly assessed, highly assessed value at. So again, what we're asking for is just to be, you know, somewhat equalized with these other comps here. Prairie's Edge, like I said, similar, um, um, similar, um, characteristics. Three Fountain Plaza is probably about two miles away, similar characteristics, two thousand fifteen. Silver Spring, you know, a little bit smaller property. And Garden Villas, again, is a little bit smaller property, but Donegal Point is the property actually right next door to it, and it's a much younger property. And that one gets higher rents than the subject property. So they're, they're somehow taking this, you know, and, and allowing some properties much greater depreciation than others. And, and again, all I'm asking for is just to be somewhat equalized with, uh, with the other properties.
You know, Todd, I'm starting to see, uh, kind of a trend here. You know, the last few multifamily properties we've seen, the local board has all been the city of Sioux Falls. When you went to local board here, was there any scrutiny or inquiry into what you just asked for?
No, we, we talked about the same thing, and what we saw, uh, across the board, pretty much for a local board, was they just sent everything on the county. They, they just, they just didn't even really look at this type of property.
So no scrutiny into trying to equalize the.
No, no, they just, they just, I think they're, they're so pressed with time in that meeting, they wanted to just get through it. Um, and, and it just, w- we saw as, as a whole apartment properties just really being pushed on county boards.
Okay.
I disagree with that. They do a very good job.
Speaking of Mike. Um, question I have, Todd.
Yeah.
Give me your one property that's most similar. Square footage age, which property is that, what is that property?
It's, it's Prairie's Edge, the, the, the first one there, that's, that's it.
And where's that in comparison? Does this link to county as well yet?
Yeah, so Klarney Crossing is going to be, um, it's going to be, you're going to see it along two twenty nine. It's in the, uh, the edges, it's kind of near where that office park is. Um, called the edges there, there's, you know, uh, Meta Bank, Total Card, all that, so it's right in that area. And then Prairie's Edge is going to be at Minnesota and. Is it Minnesota and eighty fifth or Minnesota and sixty ninth? I think one of those corners. I think it's sixty ninth in Minnesota.
Let me ask staff, would you agree that these properties are similar?
I mean, without going into detail, I mean, uh. We're averaging.
Imagine us trying to determine it too, so.
Is on average of about twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred square feet per unit. I mean, these are ranging between eight hundred forty three and twelve hundred.
So.
Per square foot, so I mean, they're relatively close and possibly in size. And we're, we're trying, trying to do a rental.
Yeah, I'm not listening to, I just want to know, square footage, age, condition. How is it, I'm, I'm not looking at income because we have a, we don't have a complete picture of income, so.
We, we knew, we managed Prairie's Edge at one time, we know it has all the exact same amenities.
Income is nice to hear, but unfortunately it's incomplete, I really don't have enough data to use that. I'm going to look at one property that you claim is the closest to it, compare it, in my opinion, um, and see, see where we're at.
Okay.
Cause that's what we are here for, is to equalize valuations to similar properties. You didn't happen to bring that data for us. Cause that would simplify us, because we are on a limited time and every time.
Yep, um, you know, again, uh, I've got the rents that we. I've got the rents that we found online.
Yeah, I, I, I don't care about the rents.
You don't care about the rents.
I want to know.
I, I know both properties have a pool, they have a playground, they have a clubhouse.
You, does, does your property have all that?
Yes, it has pool, same amenities, pool, clubhouse, playground. Um. Same, similar amount of, of green space, they're, they're both going to have attached garages to the apartment units. You know, just like I said, it's, it's, it's very, very similar, very, very comparable rents.
Is there an HOA? Is there an HOA, Todd?
No.
No.
No, it's apartment, yeah.
So would he carry similar size as a subject property? Little bit smaller, I mean, probably fifty square feet smaller, plus or minus.
And, uh.
Age is about the same?
Age is exactly the same.
About general.
Um, it did sell in two thousand twenty for...
I don't care about sales.
Okay.
I just want to know assessed valuation. Thank you, though. I, I didn't mean to be interruptive, but I don't, the sales doesn't, today doesn't affect. Next year, we can get to talk about all these again.
Is that, do we have a hundred and seventy-two units? Is that right?
There's a hundred and seventy-two units in Prairie's Edge.
Is that what we have?
There's like sixteen buildings. You didn't have to take me a minute to figure that out.
I just, we're just trying to figure out if the unit count is the...
This is what I'm having to do. We, or what we're needing to do is equalize it to a similar property that he has found. And then we'll base our decision, I would hope, on what you tell us.
That kind of number for you?
Okay, I have a commission with a...
Is that right?
Motion. Go ahead. I will accept a motion.
Hold on.
Okay.
We've got to redo the math.
All right.
Factor in the land.
Trying to give Todd as much time to his advantage.
Yeah, I, and, and that's a good comp. I, like I said, I've got a couple other ones there.
We're going to focus...
Three, Three Fountains is, is another one that's similar in, in...
You, you presented Prairie Edge. I'm going to work off Prairie Edge.
You got it.
What do you think, guys? Similar? Okay, I have another motion, or I have a motion.
Here's a motion.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, value the land at one point, one million, two hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars.
Okay.
Value the structure at fifteen million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars.
Total of? Total of fifteen, two fifty-six, eight...
Sixteen, three forty-six, eight ninety-eight.
Eight ninety-eight. Okay.
That's my motion. And that's, just so you understand the math, Mr. Chairman, it's using the Prairie Edges for, formula.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any questions, concerns? Hearing none? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. New sales data will very likely bring us back next year as well.
Great, hope so.
Okay.
Well, there just isn't a lot of sales going on right now, so.
Yeah, that's, that was my point.
You have more, Todd?
I think I'm up for the next two, right?
Awesome.
Oak Brook, yeah.
Yep. And, um, for, for these two...
We'll let Carla get, go through it. Sorry, Todd.
Yep, I get it.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eighty-one dot eighteen dot zero zero dot zero zero four. It's owned by Oak Brook Center LLC, located at five zero two four South Burr Oak Place in Sioux Falls. It's a mixed-use building, built in two thousand five. It has thirty-two thousand, eight eighty-two square feet. It does have some lower level finish. Um, our current assessment on the structure is four million, nine hundred sixty-five thousand, zero zero three. The lot value is being assessed at six hundred sixty-six thousand, five eighty-two. Our assessment notice went out at five million, six thirty-one, five eighty-five. We are recommending to lower the value of the structures down to four million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, two eighty-seven. After, uh, assessor's staff reviewed, a slight grade change was made. This recommendation would reduce the structure to the price per square foot of a hundred and forty-four dollars per square foot. Page three shows, uh, some assessment equity properties that we felt were, um, should be used as a consideration. Now, sale number, or comparable number two did sale. Um, it was after the assessment date, but these are all being assessed on the cost approach to value. Currently, the subject property is, or the recommended structure of the subject property is, um, being considered at a hundred and forty-four dollars a square foot. The cost range is between one forty-three and one fifty-nine per square foot. Um, the market indicates, um, a price for, uh, for the comparable of number two, which sold after the assessment date, um, of a hundred and fifty-eight dollars per square foot. We just wanted to show that there is a market for these types of properties. With that, stand by for questions.
Any questions for staff? Todd, I think we forego your name and address again, so...
Todd Ernst.
Yep, I think we forego that. We've got that.
Okay.
Uh, you've heard their new recommendation. Any comment on that?
What I, I have for, for everybody is, this is an appraisal that was, that was done by a little appraiser. That was about a year prior, I think you guys have mentioned that, right? Uh, a year prior to, uh, the assessment date. Um, and, and frankly, you know, like, like I was saying, we, we disagree with the approach. We, you know, we think the assessor's office is just, uh, signif, you know, very, very aggressive to, to how they're assessing all commercial properties. So, this is, uh, you know, the appraisal report. Uh, as of September twenty, twenty-first, twenty-one, the assessment date, I think, was, uh, would it, would it be November first of twenty-two? So, I, I can't believe that the, the value or the assessed value should be significantly higher in that one year period. We didn't, we didn't see any, any major changes to what was going on in the office market between late twenty-one and late twenty-two. So, uh, we're asking for the appraised value of, of this property as the, as the assessment.
Do you have the full appraisal?
I, I, I do, um, and I'd be happy to provide that. Um, we just thought for ease here and...
Just for the record, we have a four million, six hundred twenty-five thousand. Is that for the structure itself alone?
That's for the, the entire property. We should include the land and structure.
You're asking for the five million, three thirty-three, seven seven three of the PT seventeen.
Yep, I, I, I think...
So which is it you're asking for?
Well, we, when we submitted this, we, we didn't realize there was this, this recent appraisal, but we were kind of under the gun to submit everything. So I think, you know, this, this was your, this submission at that time. Since then, we've uncovered this appraisal. So, we're hoping to get back to that or as low as possible, I guess.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to believe, from my understanding, Carla helped me out, but I think we'd have to work off of the five seventeen, or their PT seventeen, um, as a request, um, unless we deem that we wanted to go off the rail and, and do something else. Uh, is there any questions for staff or the appellate?
Mr. Chair, I don't, you know, the difference between the appraisal and the PT one seventeen, I, I don't read a lot into that. I just want to equalize them, and so, maybe the...
Is there anything that you're showing that's equalized? Because I haven't been presented with anything to equalize, although we were presented as a appraisal.
I guess...
And that's where I'm going with regard to where the whole appraisal is. Because normally, a full appraisal will have the comps in it that we could look at. And then I could say, okay, what comps did you use in order to come up with this dollar amount?
Sure. When, when the appraisal is this far off of what the assessor's office is coming up with for value, I think we've got a, we've got kind of a fundamental issue. The, you know, how, how this property is, you know, they're going to show you maybe some comps. I'm going to show some other comps. Um, what you believe are good comps is kind of up to subjectivity there. But this, this property is, is assessed twenty-two percent higher than what the appraiser said it was worth just, just one year prior. So, I think we've got this fundamental issue of just getting overly aggressive on what all these properties are.
Can you show us the comps that you said, that in, that are in the appraisal?
You know, we, we did provide that at, at one time to the assessor's office. I, sorry, I didn't bring it here simply because I, I thought the appraisal would suffice for being significantly lower.
Prepared for refinancing, or what was this appraisal for?
It was, it was for refinancing.
Just for refinancing?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question on the difference between fee simple and lease fee?
Sure.
Interest? What is the difference? I mean, do you know that, because we're, we kind of Googled it as you were visiting and, I mean, we do fee simple interest, and this is a lease fee interest, and it looks like a lease fee interest. There's some still connection as an owner, and it's just the, the lease part, I mean... And is that market value, is a lease fee interest?
I mean...
Do you understand it? Because I, I, I would like clarification.
I'm not going to get into that. Members of the board are allowed to use their common sense and their experience. And my common sense and experience tells me that when you have an appraisal based upon, uh, refinancing versus trying to sell, there's a difference. I mean, let's just face it. Appraisers will try to do you a solid in order to allow you to be able to refinance. I mean, it just is. I mean, I've done it with my own house several times. Clients have done it with theirs, and I mean, it's just kind of the way of the world. And Todd, I take your point that maybe there is some fundamental issues. We can't solve them here today, though. But I'm sympathetic to that argument. I just don't think it's applicable. That's why I'm keep going back to, s, show me the comps, right?
Sure.
And in the absence of any comps, I'm kind of looking at your PT one seventeen here and saying, okay, well, that's your stated amount.
You know, if, you know... I, I would absolutely settle for that, and I, and I'd hope in, in future years, you know, that the assessor's office would, would take this appraisal and sort of relook at, at, at everything in that area, but, um...
Just for the record, the differential between what the new assessment and the PT is, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, I, unfortunately, Todd, I didn't get the evidence which is, is your property assessed inappropriately compared to a similar property. That's what we're here to do, is make sure we're equalized property. I don't have any evidence today presented to, to support your argument.
Okay.
I, I am willing to support, you know, the recommendation from the, the assessor de lord at the five million, three ninety, eight sixty-eight, or sixty-nine, excuse me. Um, but again, that, what we have to work with is evidence to show equalized value. Sales are important to justify that we're not over market, uh, but I'm not looking at that. I just want to know similar property, similar assessment, and that. And unless you have something else, I'm, I'm asking for a motion from the board at this point, so.
Yeah, and because the PT one seventeen is essentially the same as the assessor's recommendation, and because there's no comps provided, Mr. Chair, I, uh, say we deny the appeal and sustain the assessor's recommendation.
The new recommendation.
The new recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Carla, one more?
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight one dot one eight dot zero zero dot zero zero five, owned by Oak Brook Center LLC, located at five zero three two South Burr Oak Place in Sioux Falls. Um, it is a mixed-use property built in two thousand six. It has approximately thirty thousand, nine eighty-two square feet. Our current assessment went, our assessment notice went out at four million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, three eleven on the structures. And the assessment on the land, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine sixteen, um, for the li, land, for a total assessed value of five million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, two two seven. It did get appealed to local board. The local board no changed it. So, after the staff reviewed this after local board, we make a recommendation to lower the structure values to four million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, four seventy-four, leaving the lot value the same for a recommendation total of four million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, three ninety. Page two of the appeal...
Carla, I'm going to interrupt you a second. Todd, have you had a chance to see these new recommended?
We, we did.
And do you have any objection or comment?
It, it's the same argument as before.
Well, your, your PT seventeen would have been five million, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five?
Yep. It, it's the, it's the same argument as before, that I have an appraisal that shows a value of five, four, five hundred thousand dollars less than that.
Do you want to make more comments, or would you?
No, I...
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Yep.
Uh, motion.
Motion to accept the adjusted money.
Second.
Yep.
Motion seconded. Sherry?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
So that went from what they wanted at five oh two five to five one seven five.
No, it went down to four nine five six?
Yep. Come on, okay.
Where are we at? One forty?
Internet's not working now.
Where?
One fifty.
Is, uh, anybody representing the, uh, Pickett Investment LLC here? Anybody on the phone?
The RSBP's back.
Okay, we'll see if we can get them on the phone. Any luck reaching them on the phone? Does he hear us? I have no idea.
Yeah, he can hear you.
We're good to go.
Okay. Can you hear us on the phone?
Hello?
Yes. So Carla will give a quick presentation, and then we'll, uh, ask for your name and address, and then you could present, uh, to us your information. So, Carla, please lead us away.
Our next appeal is parcel number two five zero dot one eight dot eleven dot zero zero five, owned by Pickett Investments LLC, located at addresses between two oh five and two nineteen North Cherry Street in Lenox, South Dakota. It's a multifamily, um, unit. It ha, consists of eight units, built in two thousand eight. Our current assessment went out at nine hundred and forty-six thousand, five oh four for the structures, forty-two thousand for the land, for a total valuation of nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five oh four. We did review the property once the appeal came in. The assessors recommend to lower the structure value, um, because of a cost, the cost approach. It wasn't getting the, uh, town home adjustment that we made on these properties, lowering the value of the structures to eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight forty-eight. We do show that, uh, they did submit income information to staff, which showed a income approach value of five hundred and seventy thousand, six sixty-three. The sales comparison approach shows the, um... Sales on page four, as listed on this slide, between November twenty twenty-one to September twenty twenty-two sales. The sales approach is showing a valuation per square foot of ninety-two dollars to a hundred and eleven per square foot, or eighty-five thousand per unit to a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven fifty per unit. The cost is showing a cost, um, range between sixty-six dollars and a hundred and nineteen dollars a square foot, or a unit range between sixty-two thousand, two seventy-nine to a hundred and forty-six, six ninety-two per unit. Um, currently, our subject property, after the recommendation, is a hundred and eleven thousand, seven thirty-one per square feet. With that, stand by for any questions.
Per unit, eight, four, eight. What was the last comment? One hundred and eleven...
Hundred and eleven thousand, seven thirty-one per unit.
Yeah, I think, I thought maybe you had said per square foot.
Probably did. I probably did.
Okay.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
Uh, could you identify yourself with a name and address, please, and then present your evidence?
Yeah, my name is John Pickett, and I reside in Washington State at six five two two Green Mountain Road, Woodland, Washington, nine eight six seven four.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What would you like to share with us to, uh, describe your property?
Yeah, these are basically rental units, and I, I gave you our, our current rent roll, and then our last couple of years, which are pretty much what it has done since we've owned it. And it's, you know, an average of, we're only making thirty-nine thousand a year on the property once you get rid of the expenditures, which doesn't even come close. If you were to go resell the property as an investment, it wouldn't even make the amended income approach of five seventy even viable. If you're selling at a cap rate at eight, at eight percent, you're, it's only valued at about four hundred and ninety thousand as a sell price. So, you know, if you double, if you double our... So, you know, if you double, if you double our property taxes, you know, we not going to be hardly making anything on this property.
Do you have any similar property that you could share with us as to how that is assessed?
Yes, we own property in Illinois, Indiana, Texas, and Ohio.
Anything in Lincoln County, South Dakota, sir?
Oh, nothing in Lincoln County.
I'm afraid any information outside of the proximity of your property here would be hard to use as evidence.
Right.
Yeah, I think Mr. Chairman, he's pointing out.
Commissioner Ernst?
No, it's fine. I'll wait.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I was gonna say, as far as all the other, I realize they're in different states, but, you know, we're trying to make seven or eight percent on our investment money, and we're not even making that in this property since we purchased it.
Okay.
No, what I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I think what he's pointing out here, and I don't know how valid it is to his appeal, but I think the larger point is, the cost approach shows how much it costs to build these buildings today. But when you're in good old Lenox, South Dakota, the market is not keeping pace, in his estimation, with what he thinks, what we all know the cost of the buildings are. I think we all get that point. It's, you can't get the same rent rolls you can in Lenox as what you can get up in Sioux Falls.
Absolutely. And that's where hopefully individuals understand, sharing their income statements, so one can go through that process to come up with a value of a property. It's beneficial to owners, not a negative to them, so. But again, we go back to, what do we have for evidence to try to compare this property to, determine if it is over assessed in a comparable property or not?
Mr. Com. Did share his income and expense information.
He did.
Yeah, and now it's on page three, four.
And you use that?
That's where, no, we did not use it.
That comes in at a value of about five seventy. He paid six hundred and thirty thousand for this six years ago.
Is he using numbers that are inappropriate, I mean, under the market for rents or anything like that?
No.
Interesting.
Well, and it was interesting because we do have a sale number, comp one is also in Lenox, and it's four units, sold for four hundred and fifty thousand. So that's where the, the market and the income, they're not, they're not lining together. And we feel as, in our opinion, as assessors, is it's within that cap rate we're using. When we're using an income approach to value, and we showed that, and with his rent rolls, it's not lining up with what properties are selling for. So that's why we're relying on the cost approach to value. It's the most equitable approach.
Equitable between property classes.
So then, we go back to, how is this property assessed comparable to the other properties that you used?
Comp one is with, is probably the best comparable because it is a four-unit complex in Lenox. It's being assessed at a hundred and nineteen dollars per square foot, or a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per unit. And our subject is a hundred and eleven thousand per unit. So that's the equity part that we're trying to show.
Yeah, when you use the cost approach, his economics aren't lining up.
Yeah. Well, this is the cost approach as well, the bottom grade.
That's what I'm saying, is when you use the cost approach, his economic model doesn't line up with the county's valuation approach. That's why he, that's the whole reason why he wants to use the income, the income value. That's why he wants to convince us to use the income model instead.
Looking for a motion? Or if there's, unless there's other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just vote to deny the, move to deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to deny the appeal and stick with the new recommended, recommended. It's a new one, right? You had an adjustment valuation. Sherry, is there any other thing you need for clarity?
No. Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. Final one for the afternoon. Is there anybody representing Mr. Healy's Family Trust on the phone or in person? Otherwise, we'll have a break for eight minutes.
This is brand new.
So I caught John Rambo when he was out in the hallway. And for his item, I think that's the last time we have on the other agenda, not that I want to do it right now. But he said we could call him, and he would present over the phone.
We're good. The appellant is on the line.
All right, we're good to go. Can you hear us, sir?
Yes.
All right, so Carla will start us off, and then we'll ask you to give your name and address and present your testimony. Carla, please go ahead.
Our next appeal is parcel number two four zero dot eight one dot zero one dot zero zero one. It's under Healy Family Living Trust. It's a Dollar Fresh. It's a grocery store located at seven twenty-five East First Street in T., South Dakota. Again, it's a grocery store built in two thousand twenty-one. It has approximately twenty-seven thousand, two hundred square feet. Our current assessment went out for the building at two million, four thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, or seventy-four dollars per square foot. The assessment on the land went out at six hundred and nineteen thousand, eight fifteen, for a total valuation of two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five five seven. The subject is well below the purchase price. It is in line with the assessment equity of the comparables that you'll find on the next pages. The assessors are recommending no change to the two thousand twenty-three assessment. On page three, you'll see some grocery stores that have sold or assessment equities in and around the Lincoln County area. The first one is a grocery store that sold in Harrisburg for six million, six point three million dollars in December of two thousand twenty-one. Our next comparable is an assessment equity comparable on comparables two and three. The third, or excuse me, the fourth comparable is a Minnehaw County property, just to show what grocery stores are selling for. Again, the property price per square foot for the subject property is seventy-four dollars per square foot. Our cost approach is indicating a value range between seventy-four and one oh two, so it's on the lower end of the range. The market is showing a market range between sixty-two dollars and two hundred and fifty-seven dollars per square foot. With that, stand by for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Sir, if you could give your name and address for the record, and then present your testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, Gabe Knoller. The address is one four three six zero West Ninety-Six Terrace.
What would you like to share with us, sir?
Well, I, I think on this particular property, I had an informal talk, and I don't remember who I spoke to, but I had made mention that we have a, another property in Lincoln County, a Dollar Fresh that was on two oh one West Willow Street, and it was valued at eighty dollars and ninety-two cents a square foot for land and building. And after speaking with them, I think that they said what the difference was. The land value on this particular property on First Street was higher than the property that's in Harrisburg. And so we just kind of left it at that. That was the point that I had made, and that was, that would have been the point that I was gonna make at this hearing today, that they're identical properties. The other property has thirty thousand square feet. This one has twenty-seven, both built in twenty-one. And this one's valued roughly fifteen dollars a square foot higher than that one. So that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Questions for staff or the applicant, appellant?
Could, could the staff pull up that Dollar Fresh in Harrisburg?
Yep, right here. It's on the screen. So that Dollar Fresh is actually that being valued at seventy-four dollars a square foot as our comp. So the structure. The lot is different in size. Our Dollar Fresh in T. is two hundred and six, two hundred and six thousand per square foot. And the one in Harrisburg is a hundred and fifty-five, six fifteen square feet. So it is, it is priced differently. But that's the land. I mean, everybody's land in different areas. It depends on the location. T. versus Harrisburg versus corner versus side lot versus, you know, mean street versus, you know, we take all of that into consideration. So I'm not sure what the, is it the land value that you're?
Well, that was the question that I had originally at the informal level. I was just, I didn't understand what the difference was between those two properties. And like I said, after that conversation at the informal level, it was clear that the difference was in the land. Now, I mean, whether I agreed with it or not, I mean, it was indifferent. But that's all that I was trying to say is, originally, when we had this appeal, I think that's one of the reasons why we had it under appeal, was because of the difference, and them being such like properties. But I understand your argument, or your position on the land.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the land is a double. I can't answer the question of why the land in T. is worth more than the one in Harrisburg. It's a good question.
Well, what is the price per square foot? And I understand that the position, or the, the in T. is larger. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is the price per square foot on that versus the?
Three dollars, as is comparable number three. They're both being assessed at three dollars per square foot for the land. Comparables one and two are both in Harrisburg.
You've got my curiosity, too.
The, the total price per square foot in Harrisburg is eighty dollars, eighty-one, and in T. it's ninety-six. So T. is ninety-six, Harrisburg is eighty. There's a sixteen dollar per square foot difference there.
Yeah.
Don't know why.
If you want, if you want the answer as to why there's a difference here, it's because we just did a land review in T. You know, we plan to do a land review this, this summer as well, in as many areas as we can cover. Harrisburg will definitely be one of those. I mean, there is, there is inequity between T. and Harrisburg in the land values between these two.
When did we do the land in T.?
I would agree.
Was that part of some reappraisal process?
We, we.
And why was that not throughout the whole county? Because this causes inequity between communities, which is not on my radar of things that I like.
Well, just, just as we do rural residential, we did all of rural residential, and we may have done it by tiers, not all of the whole county was done at the same time. We do communities as well. And as, as long as we're doing a taxing jurisdiction, which is T., we can do them in separate units. We did it throughout the entire reappraisal process. We can't do the entire county in one year.
But we can, what was the, yeah. Gentlemen, I'm disappointed right now. I'm gonna say this creates extreme inequity from one community to another, from business to business. I'm looking for a motion to make an adjustment to the land down to the Harrisburg valuation of one thing, because that is comparable land values currently.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, to value the land price at, keep the structure priced the same as it is, move the lot price down to a dollar thirty-eight per square foot. And I'm gonna have to get the calculator out. Is that two eighty-five, one fourteen?
Yeah, I'm already doing it. Why is my calculator messing up?
Six hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen square feet times dollar point three eight equals.
Oh, I've got the wrong lot size. That's what I have.
Six one nine, eight one five, times eight equals. You're using the value of the lot. Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was. It's the two oh six.
Five, one fifteen. Is the lot size two oh six, six oh five?
Two eighty-five, two sixteen?
Two eighty-five, one fifteen.
One fifteen. Leaving the structure the same?
Yes.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second? I have a motion, a second, any other comments, questions, concern? Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. Any furthers today, guys? Till tonight, I will recess the Board of Equalization and reconvene, or ask for a motion to reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Sherry?
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
I guess John is here to speak for Rambo.
Hey, John, you want to come up?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Here on behalf of Building and Grounds to move forward with South Lincoln Rural Water, to get water into the building sites, the southern part of the four H. grounds.
Yep.
We got an estimate from South Lincoln Rural Water, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to bring water to that building site area.
This is South Lincoln?
Correct.
I understand they had a dispute between the city of Lenox and South Lincoln, but is there jurisdiction?
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Understood. Move for approval and move the water into the four H. grounds. Can they get that done prior to achievement days?
I'm hoping so.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Sherry?
Commissioner Ernst.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes. Do a quick review and make sure we have not missed anything.
We, I'm waiting for Joe to come up.
Oh, yes.
Airport items.
What about the bill goal and approve a annexation?
That one was taken off.
We took that off. We took that off, too? Yep. Okay. All right.
And I texted Joe, and I don't know.
I indicated to him to be back down here, too.
To hit one community more than double their land values on comparable property. Are you freaking kidding me?
What's that, Mike?
To hit a community similar, more than double their.
Ernest Stropmeyer, twenty-eight, five oh three, four seventy-four Avenue, Worthing. I just have two things I'd like to bring up. One is that for the equalization, I went to the township and done the paperwork thing that had to do there, and they indicated that they forwarded that to the county. And I don't know, I didn't know that this was happening because I haven't heard or seen anything yet on it. But now, you know, when it came today, I've seen that this here is doing the equalization. So I don't know if there's another week, or I don't, I don't know what's going on because I haven't heard or seen anything on it. So that's the first one item that I had. The other item I had. The other item I had.
Can I answer that question? Why don't you go off with you upstairs and we'll, we'll get it figured out.
Okay. The other item I had was, I believe it was just last week when we had the planning zoning meeting. And we had a hundred citizens here present for the meeting. And as we went down the items to be done, then we got to the part where it was gonna be the ordinance reading. And the, the legal staff, or somebody was legal, requested to go to executive session. And they were gone with the public people here. They were gone into their executive session for an hour. And I don't understand that they would have been discussing personnel or payroll. And I did get a comment back that it is in their right to have legal advice, and I understand that. But when there's a hundred people here for this kind of a meeting, and to take an hour out, and if it was about the ordinance, I don't understand why it couldn't have been brought out and discussed in the public. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like something to go up to your server? We'll get it figured out on your DOE.
Sure.
I got your email about the, you got your.
Email about the concern, and other people have said the same thing, and I agree. Maybe they could have scheduled that differently, taking into consideration all the public interest.
Ernest, I think there's gonna be adjustments to that. I was here. I sat through the whole hour anguished and expressed my disapproval of that, and I think there will be procedural changes. That won't, that won't happen again. Because there was that kind of stuff, and then when they finally came out, there was a very abbreviated time for people to express their particular views on that issue, so.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, though, for sticking around this long.
Yes, sir. Give you high marks for that.
Yeah.
Is there any Commissioner reports?
I have none. I'll wait until next week.
Joe able to join us, or are you taking it?
I can get him up here.
Okay. Are you?
You also have two executive sessions.
Oh. And see if Joe can get this done. Is he? I told him we'd be ready at two.
We take a break before we get into executive session.
Let's see if we can find out where Joe's at.
Do you want to hear Commissioner's report?
Sure.
You guys weren't at the convention. We had a great convention.
Because we weren't there, of course.
Uh, that's right. I, we had, we had, all of our officers were there, and we had great speakers. And hopefully, you'll all attend in September, because there will be the annual meeting will be, our convention will be in Sioux Falls.
Oh.
All right, you have three, four, and five. We're gonna award an apron project.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm here to ask for three separate actions regarding the airport and its apron. The first is specifically language offered to you by the second page from Helms, in which we are asking for you to award the base bid to LT Companies, Inc., contingent on the FAA grant. As I mentioned, Brooke Helms offers specifically what she would envision the language of that motion to be on the second page. In short, that bid was one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars less than the next bid. And it entails total costs in which we share with the feds and the state. And as I mentioned, Helms deemed that offer complete and reasonable.
Mr. Chair, I move to award the bid to LT Companies, subject to the FAA grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Otherwise, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you. The second action that I'm asking the Board to consider today is to approve and execute the grant application for the North Apron, which we've been circulating for the past year and a half. Essentially, this is the same amount as before. This is just the grant application in which the feds would share in that cost.
Move for approval of signing of that grant? Motion and second. Is there any other comments, questions, concerns? Otherwise, Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you. And the third action I'm asking for is an amendment to the professional services contract, which we have with Helms and Associates. That amount is for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars ninety-five cents. This is less than the independent fee estimate in which we obtained from Meat and Hunt, and we do trust Helms and Associates, so I'm asking for that action.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the request for the amendment.
Second.
Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We will take a ten-minute recess. What do you want?
Move to go into executive session and also take recess as well.
All right, I have a sec. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Sherry?
Which, oh, never mind. Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Out of executive session?
Second.
Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. We are now in recess until six?
No, we can adjourn as Board of.
You want to adjourn as a commission? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, Sherry?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.